All our meeting to order. Oh, sorry about that. That's better. Okay, welcome to tonight's meeting of the city council. I'll mention a few. Logistics, anyone who's joining remotely, we would appreciate it if you would. Set your name display to be. Be your full first and last name, so we know who we're talking to and who's talking to us. Anyone who wishes to address the council, we'd ask you to. First must be recognized by the mayor. Second, start out by saying your name and where you live, so that we. Again, have a sense of. Who we're talking to. We ask you to keep your comments or questions to under three minutes, except. In the general business and appearance appearances section of the meeting, in which case the. Time limit is five minutes. And if you just speak out of turn, discuss non-German topics, go on too long, etc., you may be interrupted and asked to adjust your comments. Or behavior. First step is to approve the agenda. I think all members of the council got the note that we're taking the. Oh. The number nine, the growth center designation off tonight's agenda, because we're still gathering information for that. And with that. Can I consider the agenda approved? All right. Next up, we have general business and appearances. This is an opportunity for any member of the council, for any member of the public to address the council on any topic. That is not on tonight's agenda. And we will. Take comments from anyone in the room or anyone. Joining us online. And. We ask you to keep your comments. Two, three minutes or five minutes in length. Is there anyone in the room who would like to go? Vicky Lane, I saw you up first, so you're up.
Um, okay, um, you're a little bit earlier than I thought. Um, I. I frequently check in on the police department's media logs. And this past one that they, well, two weeks that they published up yesterday. Um, for the week of, uh, the week including. July seventeenth. Um, as I'm reading it, apparently there was a disturbance. At the transit center and the description rather than say. Um, rather than refer to police responded to a disturbance. At the transit center, and I was gonna try to pull up the police log and read it exactly. Um, before you started, but they referred to the gaggle. Of. People at the transit center. They were responding to something, the gaggle at the, and, um. That has a negative connotation. And I even looked it up on Google and in slang, it definitely has a negative connotation. And I, I would. Hope that the police department could be a little less judgmental. Um, and I don't know who reviews those media logs before they go out, but, um. I think a better terminology would have been police responded to a disturbance, a reported disturbance at the transit center. Instead of police went to the gaggle at the transit center. Um, because that, uh, I mean. It's tough enough to be unhoused. I don't really think that we need to. Demean people in such a way. Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. I completely agree that every member of the public is entitled to be treated respectfully by, by the police and in fact, by all. Uh, city employees and officials. Anybody else online who's. Seeking to be recognized? Uh, up Patrick.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I don't even know how to use my thumb on this thing. And so I just raised my hand. Um, just wanted to give an update on.
Start out by telling me, telling us, telling us your name and where you live.
Okay, Patrick Healy. I live in Marshfield. I'm the director of Green Mount Cemetery in Montpelier. Just wanted to give an update. We're, um, we're in the transformation stage of letting. Um, the grass grow on about two thirds of the cemetery and we're mowing that all down. We usually start. Mid-July when the grass has turned yellow, um, and most of any other flowers would have come out at that time. So I just wanted to give an update that we are, um, mowing everything down and within a couple of days. We should have everything taken care of and then the whole cemetery will be mowed every two weeks. If anybody has questions, always feel free. You can email me or call me at eight zero two. Two seven nine six nine five seven.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Zach.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, staff and audience. I'm Zach Hughes, Montpelier. I just, um, wanna say I'm kind of encouraged today by, um, some communications. Between some of the council members and, uh, the co-chair of the homelessness task force and a few others. About how we can, uh, come together perhaps on a regional, uh, level. But I still, but there's still, you know, we have a lot of stuff to do and. I wanted to also thank Jim for coming over to the homelessness task force. Listening to us for the entire meeting, talk about the important issues. Appreciate that and continued support. Um, as evidenced by the police data and by the. By the issues of Confluence Park, the businesses, uh, we still have quite an issue here. In the city of Montpelier, which it's a regional issue, but at the same time. It is a city issue. I think folks are starting to come to realize that and, um. We appreciate continued support, uh, regardless. I yield back to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Steve.
Steve, whatever. Uh, I'm gonna, I may sound repetitive because people are. Crapping in the, in the bushes. Uh, we don't have, I actually sent some tourists, some kid, guy walking around with his kid. And I know early, earlier in the day last weekend, the city hall was open because there was a performance at Lost Nation Theater. And then come four o'clock, it's locked again. I just sent them there and, you know, people are. Desperate for bathrooms and unhoused people are doing it wherever they want and that's. Been a hygiene issue for years and we do nothing about it. You know, we don't even discuss at a council meeting, keeping the city hall open. With the hall, center hallway doors locked and letting those bathrooms be used. I don't know. You know, somebody wise suggested, actually, he's a senior, uh. Taxpayer in the, in the town and he's got to. Partner with some, uh, physical challenges right now. He suggested that the council. Go out and with, with a. Take turns. One way out, put one person pushing the wheelchair and the other way, another person, the other person swap out. And just realize the condition of our sidewalks. Realize how bad a shape our city is in. Y'all live in your bubble and pretend that, oh, we're doing the best we can. But you don't suffer it the way the people do with walkers and with wheelchairs and with, you know. You really don't. You're, you're aloof. You're out of touch. Uh, bathrooms, same way. It, you know, to sustain a homelessness task force that hasn't gotten. We have less bathrooms today than we had five years ago because the two in the basement of city hall have been gone since the flood. And y'all do nothing about it. You don't even meet, you know, you can't even give us the dignity of meeting a committee you've been appointed to, Carrie. You know, it's as if you really are just going through the motions here. And winter is coming sooner than we have planned for. We know that Good Samaritan's eighteen shelter. Eighteen bed congregant shelter is not gonna, am I talking too loud or too close? Or angle that's a little different. Uh, we know that it's not gonna accommodate. A third of the people that are in town and it's not a healthy environment. People's mental health degrades if you don't give them privacy. And to listen to each other cough and hack and wheeze and groan, you know, in a congregant shelter, they're not gonna get any sleep. You know, so. Why does it take five years of talking about it to have accomplished zero? And what are you doing about it? And when are you gonna talk about it? You know, you go through the motions of having a special meeting at the high school, you know, September eighteenth of last year. What have you done? You know? What, what progress? What, what? Actionable steps have you taken? And pretty much you don't have to answer because I know it's zero, you know? So what are we gonna do for this winter? We. We have a lunch, we, the lunch program moved from one church to the other. They don't even have a flush toilet. This is a. A full, probably restaurant permitted or should be, uh, dining hall without a head washing sink for the. Patrons, you know, they go out and use an outhouse. It's like we left the Good Samaritan a whole year in the shelter, out of Country Club Road without a shower. Like where is the integrity of this body? Where is the vision and the planning of this body? And why don't you wanna talk about it? So. I expect results. I expect action. I expect discussion, you know? That's not unreasonable. You're getting, you're spending lots of money, but you're not being very effective. And I think we've seen a bait and switch. We were sold a crap town plan based on the growth center deadline. And now we're gonna just blow off the growth center deadline and try for chip instead or tip or tier one, you know? You were, we were sold a bill of goods. There was no reason to rush that plan and adopt the crap plan. With lots of things missing, like ADA compliance, like regional dispatch, like public toilets, you know? There was no reason to adopt that on a rush order, except for this growth center deadline in August, and now we're blowing it off. Taking off tonight's agenda and by mid-August, there won't be, you know, be a done deal.
Thanks, Steve. Vicky, I, uh, Mike, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to, because we aren't gonna have the opportunity to. Beat for item number nine. Uh, I did wanna go and kind of put out on a positive note, uh, council is aware, but public may not be that. Uh, the city plan, our city plan that we adopted last month has been awarded Vermont Planners Association Plan of the Year. Uh, it was a very competitive year and so it's a very big honor for us to have won that and it's not my honor, it's your honor. It's everyone's honor who participated in that process. And, uh, so the, the way the awards work in northern New England is, uh, all applicants. Go to the state, go to the Vermont Planners Association and we hand those off to. Our neighboring state, to New Hampshire and New Hampshire to Maine, Maine to Vermont and. Uh, that way they are reviewed by. Independent people. I have no idea who reviewed it and awarded it, but it was folks from New Hampshire. So if people think that I was. Out whining and dining our, our folks, I would have no opportunity to do that. It was, uh, so it was a big honor, uh, and. Just wanted to let the members of the public know that, uh, we did have that honor and we'll see where it goes from here.
Mike, congratulations for this. I think this was great. You, you say it's not an honor for you, but you're the one who was. Driving this through the whole way and I, uh. It really is a reflection of your expertise and hard work to, to have brought this in. And I wouldn't be surprised at the fact that it was. Put in as a, as an online plan is one of the things that made it stand out.
Thank you. It's not ADA compliant. Oh, and we will be having, if it hasn't officially come out, there was a complaint that our plan was not ADA compliant. And we fully researched that. We looked at what is in the R G I S, which is the, the. It was built in R G I S story map that as a program is automatically ADA compatible, as long as you go through and do a number of pieces, which we did. Uh, Nick from my office is a G I S specialist. It's what he does and he went through and put all the alt text in. Uh, and then just to make sure everything was correct in both the PDF. And in the online version, I asked Evelyn, our communications coordinator, to test it. She tested it with three separate programs and it works in all three programs. So whatever this complaint is, uh, we have found no validity to it. It is an ADA compliant plan. It had been tested. Uh, if anyone in the community. Experiences any difficulties with any ADA, um, abilities. By all means, please contact my office or Evelyn and it will be a top priority of us to fix, but as far as we know and as far as all of our testing has been done in all of the standard ADA. Uh, readable formats, it has succeeded in every single format. They might report, there were like two things. The logo didn't get alt text. So there's a logo for the city of Montpelier that we missed for alt text. And on the implementation plans, if you remember those big.
Yep.
Boards, there was a picture at the bottom that was behind the image, behind all the text. We didn't put an alt. Text on that. So those were two things we missed, but neither of which impact the substance of the document itself.
Great, thanks.
Did one, that's, that's an important thing. We, we take ADA very, very seriously and, uh, we did wanna go and follow up to say that's just not true.
So anyone can click on that and have, uh. Text to voice, text to speech.
Yes, those should all work. Evelyn has tested them. And if, again, if anyone in the community has any issues for whatever ADA. Please let us know and we will research it and if we have to come back and fix the document, we would be the first ones to come back and have you fix that.
Great, I agree. That's very important. Thank you. Um, Vicky, I see you've got your hands up again, hand up again. I'm not sure if that was intentional, um. Well, you do probably have a couple of minutes left if you have something else you need to say.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to mention, um, that, um, we are not a restaurant. The Trinity Church is not a restaurant quality. Uh, we simply serve meals, uh, and it's not a restaurant. And we're not bound by restaurant things and we are still trying to recover from the flood. Thanks.
Thanks, Vicky. And Zach, you have something else to get in?
Yeah, I could be real quick. I, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mike for clarifying that ADA. Um, and, um, I'm assuming that. I'll take your word that if we need to reach, if anyone needs to reach you all about that, uh. We'll certainly be able to do that. And real quick, I just wanna mark this milestone about the upcoming shelter. With Good Samaritan, I really think this is a milestone, uh, for the city, uh, because we haven't, uh. I didn't even think this would happen in the decades I've been here. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach. Um. I think we are ready to move on to the consent agenda. The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving right along. We have. Three applications, which I think we might, uh. Take up as a group, an application of the Complete Streets Committee, a reappointment to the tree board and, uh. Oh, maybe just two. Is there a motion to? Okay, thank you. So is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And, and a motion is for, um. James Finley, Sheriff to the Tree Board and Carolyn Gridinsky to the Complete Streets Committee. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? These are both reappointments and I just. Appreciate, always appreciate the people that are willing to come out and volunteer for the, uh. For the boards, you know, a lot of what we, what, a lot of what the city does couldn't happen without all of our volunteers. Next up, Community Fund Board Recommendation.
Looks like he is not online yet and probably is running a few minutes late. If you arrive, we'll slot him right in.
Okay.
Uh, my name's Shayna Casper. I, what?
Is this Chris? Perfect timing. Oh.
Are you ready to stop it?
Be there together. Ah. I'm happy to be here. Sorry, I'm late.
You're not late, it's fine.
Uh, I'm Christopher Kaufman Ilstrup. I'm also on the commission. This is probably my last meeting because my term has expired. Uh, but it's happy to, uh, be here to answer any questions that you have. And I don't know if you said anything. We had just two. Two points we wanted to make. Uh, first of all, thank you, um, once again for supporting the Montpelier Community Fund. And we just wanted to make, uh. A note of the fact that many of the proposals that we received this year had to do with, uh, the crisis around people who are unhoused. Um, it takes up a pretty significant amount of the budget. Um, and we would like for the council to consider whether they would, uh, make those grants. Outside of the philanthropic efforts of the Montpelier Community Fund, um, in the future. And then secondly, the other point that we wanted to make is one that we've made for a number of years now is that the, the budget for the fund has been. Level funded for at least five years, probably quite a bit longer than that, uh, and the need continues to grow. We've heard feedback from nonprofits who are applying to the fund, um, that they feel like they might not be getting, uh, what they would like. Um, and they're considering going back to the ballot, uh, which was the point that the community fund was trying to solve. It's having, uh, you know, a whole list of nonprofits collecting signatures and going on to the ballot. Um, so we'd just like you to consider that as your budget planning for next year. Uh, whether or not there is a way to bump that budget up, um, at least, uh, around the rate of inflation. Uh, over what it's been for many, many years. Anything to add?
Yeah, we switched our review and approval process a couple of years ago so that now we're reviewing the applications after things have already gone to the ballot. And so being level funded again, having to only offer a fraction of what people were asking for, I think means it's gonna have a big impact on next year's budget. So we wouldn't have seen the impact of this this year yet. Obviously, if we were doing it today, um, but, uh, yeah, that is a significant concern in being level, continuing to be level funded. Um, and that's seeing the increasing need. So, yeah, let us know if you have any questions about the proposal. Or anything else.
Yeah, anybody have any questions?
I would just say thank you for your work on this. I know it's tough, tough making decisions like that when there's a lot of need and just really appreciate your work.
All right, is there a motion to approve the, uh. Recommendation from the community fund? Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks for doing this. It's, uh, I, I know it probably. Do your work is in, I get a concentrated period of time, but it's, but it's a lot going through everything. So thanks for being here.
It's also enjoy to read about all the great work and stuff in Montpelier and, uh, if you ever wanna read the proposals, welcome to join us.
That's what I was gonna say. Cause it's getting termed off. We need to have new members join if anyone's interested in giving money to. Well-deserving organizations in Montpelier. Highly encourage folks to apply to join.
Great, we should, we should.
Let us know if you know folks.
Yeah.
We should probably start recruiting early so that we're ready for next year.
Yeah.
All right, thanks a lot. All right, we're up to item ten FEMA status update.
Well, Sarah's coming up. I'll heat this up. Um, so we've got a brief presentation for you this evening. Um. We wanted to get back in front of you with the status of our, you know, projects. Um, since we last met, uh, we did submit for an alternative procedures project back in March and so it's been a while. Um, since that point, we have submitted our damaged inventory. Um, and so that's sort of what some of the heating up was. Um, we did have a meeting with the, the EM, Brian Everhart yesterday, um, to provide us with some additional details in terms of. You know, the actions that we can take to kind of really spur that forward. We are hearing through the grapevine that some of the other, uh, four twenty-eight projects like ours are moving. And folks are hearing back with offers or questions. Um, so we're hopeful that we'll be in that boat sometime soon as well. But we wanted to really kind of get back to you, given that we're, you know, still in the month of July, we're two years out. And we wanted to talk about what's happening, what's next, um, and then really think about strategizing, um, for the future. And so. Ideally, we would be in a position where we would be discussing offer based on the Stevens and Associates package that we put forward. We're not there yet. And so we have a question, um, put to the, um, that would sort of indicate whether or not we could advance construction before we know what our offer is. And so restoring things to codes of standards. I don't know that we would want to do that per se, but we also are at a point where. We really need to put things back and so we might approach you with a proposal. Um, what we would really like is to get an offer on our projects first. Um, so we're gonna take that angle, but we also wanna provide alternative strategies if that's something that we can do. So. Sarah's got her presentation up here and so she's gonna run you through all the details, um, and then there will be time at the end for questions.
And Kelly, um. Because it's been a while since we've talked about it, could you refresh people's memories on what alternative procedures project means?
Sure. Oh, awesome. It's gonna, she's good at all, though.
You're so good, Sarah.
Yes, she is.
So this is a quick ten slide presentation, um, to go over our FEMA's status update. Um, this is for the July twenty twenty-three event, um, for flooding and that's referred to by FEMA as, um, disaster DR forty-seven twenty. Um, as well as the July of twenty twenty-four flood event, um, which they refer to as DR forty-eight ten. Um, so here I just wanted to give you a quick, um, FEMA Public Assistance Overview. Um, FEMA's Public Assistance Program is to provide supplemental grants to state, tribal, territorial, local governments and certain types of private nonprofits so that community. Excuse me, communities can quickly respond to and recover from major disasters or emergencies. Um, it goes on to describe hurricanes, tornadoes and earthquakes. Um, obviously in our case, it was flooding both times, um, which still. Uh, meets those and they are working for, uh, debris removal, life-saving, emergency protective measures and restoring public infrastructure. They also encourage protecting these damaged facilities from future events by providing additional assistance for hazard mitigation measures during the recovery process. And so in large-scale projects, which FEMA considers over a million dollars, um, there's a higher level of mitigation threshold that you can receive. For projects less than the million dollars, um, you're looking at more about fifty percent of the project costs. You can get back an additional mitigation, um, with providing mitigation plans. And so the way FEMA Public Assistance works is that there are two separate buckets, emergency work and permanent work. Under the emergency work category, um, there is A and B for debris removal and emergency protective measures. Um, under permanent work, we've got C through G and then Z, um, roads, water control facilities like our Dicky Dam that was damaged. Public buildings and contents, public utilities, parks, recreational and others such as the cemetery. And then there's a category Z for management costs, which you can collect at the end. And so that would be my time, Chris's time, Zach's times. Kelly, anybody who worked on these projects to compile the data and submit them, there is a bucket at the end where we've all been tracking our time. In hopes to recoup some of those costs as well. It is not typical, especially in Vermont, that, um, communities have, um. Damages in every category, um, but we had them in every category, um, for the July twenty twenty-three flooding event. Um, so it has added a level of complexity, um, and detail to the projects, um, so just to make you aware of that. Uh, and again, eligibility for public assistance is based on four basic components, the applicant, the facility, the work and the cost. Um, this is, uh, a FEMA diagram that just talks about what. This is a FEMA diagram that just talks about what I said before, the state territory. Obviously, we are the local government. We had facilities, buildings, public works, equipment, dams, all of them. Our work was both emergency and permanent. And all of the expenses we have to date are tied to eligible work and have been adequately documented. And just a little bit more about the public assistance delivery model. It goes in several phases. There's the operational planning and response phase, which happens immediately following the disaster. You then hit phase one where you start to coordinate with a program delivery manager. We have had six or seven for the July of 2023 event, which has made this even trickier as we are reliving the flood with every new PDMG because FEMA doesn't have a great system to transfer information from one PDMG to the next. Then after that, you have 60 days from that recovery meeting to compile your damaged inventory list, which we have done for both events, the July of 23 and 24. Those were submitted a long time ago. Where we sit today in both of the events is in phases three through five. We have developed damage descriptions and scopes of work on almost all of the projects. We are in the process of submitting applications and full packages of the documentation for final review. And then we have had a significant number of our projects obligated. And that, when they obligate the funds, the recipient is actually the state and not the city. So FEMA passes along the funds that were obligated for city projects along to the state, who then sends us a grant application, which we review and approve, and then they remit the federal portion to us. At the end of the disaster event, when we have wrapped up all of our projects, is when we will receive the state share of those funds, and that will be part of a true-up at the end. I expect the end of these projects for us is still multiple years out, at least for the July of 23 flood. I am hoping we will be able to wrap the July of 24 flooding event much faster than this one. And then there's post-award monitoring amendments and closeouts. We will be providing updates for a significant time after this to ensure we are in compliance with everything and that there's no need to return any funds, which I don't expect there will be. So to dig right into the 4720 event, July of 23, we submitted a damaged inventory list to FEMA back in October of 23 that showed 44 impacted sites. We had originally made rough estimates based on those damages. To get this list in, those estimates are not estimates you are held to whatsoever. They just start to get lodged into the system and so they can use to evaluate the level of the disaster. This event ended up being large enough that it was 90% federally funded instead of 75% federally funded, which makes a big difference on the amount of funds the city will have to expend to cover our portion of those costs. We have through projects that have been submitted and obligated, as well as bids that have been received. We do believe that estimate of that damage is more in the 26-plus million dollar range as opposed to 11 like we had originally estimated. As I mentioned before, we had them in all categories, but those 44 damaged sites were able to be consolidated into 38 FEMA projects. At this time, 25 of those projects have been obligated, and most of those funds on the obligated projects have been received. I expect as we head to the end of July, we will get some more information from the state about additional projects that have been obligated but not yet funds remitted to the city. So I'm hopeful that we will be able to get some more money in on those shortly. There are also 10 projects that have either been submitted to FEMA to be estimated or as complete project packets, and they are undergoing the review process. The way that works is they come back with many questions and ask for maybe additional narratives or information. Most of it is information they have been provided. They just missed in their review. And so while it's a cumbersome process, I have been really successful in maneuvering it and working with the numerous PDMGs to start getting funds in the door. And we do have two debris removal projects that we had requested extensions on. Those extensions expired May 9th, or excuse me, July 9th. And so we just completed that work on the 9th to finish removing debris. We had staged debris at the stump dump that we were still removing. And so FEMA did grant and the state assisted with that additional extensions so that we had time to get that debris removed and still have those expenses covered by FEMA. And then, as you all mentioned, there is one major project. It is the City Hall Fire Department, Fire Department Sidewalk and Ramp, and Police Department that was submitted under a Section 428 Alternative Procedures Project. And on that project, under the Section 428 of the Stafford Act, the goals of the proceedings, Alternative Procedures Projects are to reduce the cost of the federal government by providing public assistance, increase flexibility in the administration of such assistance, expedite the provisions of assistance, which we haven't really seen, but we're working there, and provide financial incentives and disincentives for timely and cost-effective completion of the project. So once we receive a fixed cost offer, we can go back and forth with FEMA. But then some of the additional requirements and extra scrutiny and hoops to jump, once we both have agreed and accepted this fixed cost offer, FEMA takes a step back and lets you manage your project and work through it in a way that works best for you, as long as you are meeting what you've outlined in your packet to them, and you are adhering to codes and standards and implementing mitigation that you've proposed. And so the way that this will work, hopefully, is that we submitted that whole packet with the Stevens and Associates report back in March, March 20 of 2025. I have been having a significant amount back and forth with FEMA to correctly identify the damage descriptions and dimensions for these three buildings and the sidewalk. We had to have FEMA come back multiple times to do additional site inspections and they continued to leave substantive items off, such as the elevator or the generator. And so once you sign off on these DDDs, you're locking in that these are your true damages, and that's what they're going to hold you to. Anything not on that list that comes up after you would have to appeal to FEMA. So I wanted to be sure they were right before signing off on them. And so I was just able to sign off on them after thorough review on July 11th. So hopefully that pushed our project back ahead. And as Kelly mentioned, we've been meeting with Vermont Emergency Management. That way, they can help us push these projects and keep them at the top of FEMA's priority lists so that they don't get lost in the mix with other disasters. The 4720 event is now no longer with a PDMG who is in the state of Vermont or working with Vermont directly. So we need to make sure we stay at the top of their list. In addition, the state submitted extensions for all 428 projects. Those are good through January of 2026. I expect that we will receive an offer and questions back from FEMA before then. And the state is going to help, but it has been promising after meeting with some folks with the state that they are receiving feedback on their alternative procedures projects as we love to move ahead and make our buildings more resilient and put them back together.
Sarah, we've been hearing this term for, seems like a couple of years now, but could you refresh people's memory on what it means when you refer to codes and standards projects?
Well, codes and standards projects is basically you're required, you're required to put it back to you today. So if there were ADA accessibility issues that you weren't required to fix in the old building, but now that you're putting it back, you are required to fix those. Another piece of our codes and standards is elevating utilities out of the basement. And I don't want to butcher the code because that's not my expertise, but two feet above.
Base blood elevation.
So, you know, we're, that code and standard for us is a little different than FEMA is accustomed to. So we have had to provide some additional information in regards to that because it is a more strict code than many other communities have. But we have had other applicants, FEMA applicants within the city of Montpelier who are being held to those same codes and standards. And their projects have worked through the system. So I don't expect that, you know, we will have any issues with that as we work ours through. And so for funding sources, as I mentioned before, the 2023 flood, given its size across the state, was eligible for 90% federal funding. The state is then kicking in 7.8% of funding for all municipalities, which is not typical. It's typically based on your ERAF rates. And ours is, is excellent. It's the best one we could have. So that will help us in the 2024 event that's not 90% federally funded. And then we will be on the hook for 2.2% of our total costs. Some of our forced account labor and forced account equipment, so labor performed by staff on, on city payroll, as well as we get credit at FEMA rates for different municipal vehicles and equipment that's been used. And so as part of every project, I've been including all of the forced account labor and equipment. And my hope is that that will offset a significant portion of our match. All of that labor that we expensed, I left in the general fund in the fiscal year of which the event occurred. And so that should help mitigate what we have left over at the end to cover as a city. In addition, we received insurance proceeds. Also immediately following the flood, I called the bond bank because I knew we were going to be in need of some additional funding, given the size and scale of our event. And they started talking with others and reached out to the state. And then conjunction with the treasurer's office, established the Municipal Climate Recovery Fund. Obviously, there was a large need and it wasn't a huge pool of funding, but the city did receive the largest loan from that pool at 2.13 million. And that has a 1.3% interest rate that BLCT has subsidized for the first million. So our interest costs on that loan are very low, and that has been incredibly helpful to float the costs we've had while we're waiting for FEMA reimbursement. I also went out and got a flood recovery line of credit with Community National Bank in the amount of $6 million to keep us covered as we start to move through some of these bigger projects. I have not drawn on that. We have been strategically managing all of the city's cash flow to limit borrowing and carrying costs associated with the flood project so that the, that gap we need to cover is less at the end of this. So in the packet you were all provided, I gave details by project of expenses to date and the revenues received. I have summarized them here by category. And so you can see in expenses to date, we've spent about $3.3 million on this event. And we have taken in $1.6 million in FEMA reimbursements on the 25 projects that they have obligated and remitted reimbursement on. The, there was insurance proceeds we received in the $910,000 range. There's about another $60,000 coming. I actually have the check being deposited today. And then you can see the loan proceeds from the, the recovery fund loan are sitting in there right now as the biggest offset to help cover. As I said, that was a huge benefit to us. And then in some of the projects, we did receive efficiency Vermont rebates and some donations from the flood. So that wraps my 4720. To move on to 4810, the 2024 flood, we were significantly smaller in size and scale. The damaged inventory contained 13 sites with an estimate of about 325,000. After further review with FEMA, some of those sites were in the federal highway and therefore they are not eligible for FEMA funding. We wanted to ensure they were all on the list. Federal Highway would not pay for mitigation, but FEMA would. And so we wanted to make sure we had captured everything to maximize the amount of funds we could get back in to help make us more resilient. Those damages that remain were consolidated into two projects, debris and road damage. The debris, in part, some of it was combined with the 4720 flooding debris related to the Bailey Ave Bridge. And some of it was for sewer main cleaning. And so that work was completed as of July 9th. And so I will begin working on all of the debris packets to submit to FEMA and get reimbursed once we receive final invoices, which I expect will happen in the next month. And then the road damage project, we submitted detailed descriptions. FEMA came out and did site inspections, and they have currently estimated the road damage at about 177,000. We are reviewing that to see if there's additional mitigation funding we can request along with those projects, but it is likely those projects can be completed in-house for less than the $177,000. And the way this works with FEMA is that FEMA considers anything under a million dollars a small project. And so whatever they give you that is over what you spend, you get to keep. And so some projects you may do more favorably on than others. And this is one where we may do more favorably on this one than we receive in funds, which would be very helpful. And then with this one, the funding is 75% federal, 17.5% state, and 7.5% city. Today, we've had minimal expenses, and I expect most of it will be covered by forced account labor with the exception of debris. And then just to wrap this up, the FEMA process is incredibly complex and cumbersome. We have excellent record-keeping in the city, and I've been able to submit detailed packages to FEMA that have included summary and detailed spreadsheets, narratives, photos, estimates, bid documents, invoices, timekeeping, and all of our policies and union agreements. Our main goal here is to maximize reimbursement and minimize any financial burden that would be shifted to taxpayers as we would need to budget in the future to cover any gap. Along with rebuilding the infrastructure that is stronger, more resilient, and better prepared for future events. And so with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Aye, aye, aye. Thanks, Sarah. This, this is really amazing. It is so good to have some, someone so incredibly competent to be able to keep on top of tracking.
I do not want to be the FEMA expert, but I seem to be.
Does anyone have any questions?
Thinking about, I mean, that is incredible. Like, thank you for the work that you're doing. I'm curious, like, how much of your time, like, I don't even know if you could put it on, but like a percentage of your time since the 2023 flood has been dedicated to addressing FEMA stuff. And I'm just thinking about like the opportunity cost of that. And also wondering, I mean, I can't imagine that there's the capacity to do this, but like, you know, is there ever thought of in these kinds of disasters, like outsourcing some of this work so that we're not kind of supplanting?
So I spent a significant amount of time. I mean, really managing FEMA is a full-time job in its own, mixed with my other full-time job. So, you know, I do put in a lot of extra hours to get FEMA stuff across the line, just because that is what is in the best interest of the city. In hindsight, you know, we were all very gung-ho to fix it, put it back together and do it ourselves. And so in an event that is the size, and we wanted to save the money because a consultant, while you can recoup a portion of that cost, you can't recoup all of it. And we were not in a financial position to be able to recoup, in my opinion, enough at the time of the disaster, given what we didn't know to hire a consultant. On my wall, if I were to leave, I would write, in a size and scale of the July 2023 flood, hire a consultant immediately. So, you know, with the 24 flood, that was very manageable, easy to push that across the finish line. But if I were to do it again, I would absolutely advocate for a consultant to help us manage. When we got to a point where we realized that that may have been the right approach from the start, we were so deep in that I would have been spending so much time holding somebody else's hand to get them there, that I as well just keep at it.
Thanks. Thanks. Thanks a lot, Sarah. This is great. I really appreciate you keeping us updated on what's going on. All right. Moving up to communication update.
I think that's the name I'm going to get set up here. All right, Sarah, we can see that okay? Good evening, everyone. This is Evelyn Prim, Communications Coordinator for the city. And I wanted to give you a brief update on the Updated Strategic Communications Plan. It has been the practice in the past couple of years that I have briefed the council on communications some point in the late spring, early summer. And so this timed pretty nicely with the council's strategic planning process. So I've been able to incorporate a lot of your goals into this plan as well. Get into our next slide. So just to give you a brief overview of the agenda, so I'm going to cover the, just a high level overview of the strategic communications plan and primarily the key parts that have changes that have changed. Going to touch on some interesting year-to-date data that we are going to incorporate into our performance and indicators. The mainly focusing on the updated goals, big changes from last year, given the budget changes and staffing changes that we've seen in the last year or so. I talk about the key platforms and performance indicators, again, kind of just honing in on what we're doing and how we're going to measure communications performance going forward and a brief summary. So I started off the plan same as the councils by outlining our vision and mission. And so I'll just read this here for the benefit of the group. So the strategic communications plan vision is the city of Montpelier creates public value by effectively communicating information with the community in an efficient, engaging and responsive manner. And the mission is the city of Montpelier provides responsible and engaged government through effective communication. The communications coordinator works to strategically advance the core services to communicate effectively through innovative, accessible, diverse, desirable and efficient communication practices and methods. And if that sounds familiar to some of you, I hold a lot of that from the twenty twenty two, twenty three or twenty four city council strategic plan that listed providing responsible and engaged government as one of their five goals. And so that was the strategic plan that I came into when I was first hired back in twenty twenty two. And that has kind of been my north star throughout all of my work here. So some interesting data points I wanted to share with you all. So to touch on some, provide some context for some of the notes in the, or items in the plan. The plan is linked on this council's agenda online. And I'm also happy to, to share it with anybody if they have having trouble finding it. We will publish the, the final version on the communications page, which is on, under the city manager's page. But I still have some work I need to do to it before it's finalized. But the draft, the draft plan is up there, so you can see what I've done so far. So back to the data, so across all of the city of Montpelier platforms, we have just over twenty seven thousand Facebook followers. There are a couple pages that have, where you can like like the page rather than following, following the page. I did not include those in here. That's the feast account. But across the, the general cities page, the rec page, MSAC and police, actually, police has the, the largest with sixteen thousand. So way to go MPD for getting a great reach there. The, the next bullet point is we have almost eight, or a little over eight point six thousand subscribers to the Montpelier Front Porch Forum. And again, that includes just people in Montpelier or households in Montpelier that have signed up. That does not include also our surrounding towns, which I, I live in Middlesex and our front porch forum pales in comparison to Montpeliers. So frequently you'll see Montpelier Front Porch Forum posts shared in neighboring towns. So while we are reaching a great number of people in the city, we're also reaching several outside in our neighboring towns, which is great. And then we have almost thirteen thousand VT Alert subscribers to the Montpelier group. That is a great number comparatively to the state, which is, I believe, last time I checked, it was just over sixty five thousand statewide. So a decent percentage of the people that sign up for VT Alert are subscribed to the Montpelier area group, which is, which is great. And that's one of our, the primary goals we'll get to once we get to that point. We have across all of our notify me subscription lists, we have just over six thousand. And again, we're, we are working to grow that as well. And I just, just out of curiosity, I tallied up our committee meetings. And so with the current list and the committees that are on hold, right now, we would have an average or approximate number of committee meetings at just about two hundred and fifty a year. And if we were to, if all the committees were fully up and running, that number would jump to about three hundred and fifty. So there's a decent amount of meeting times and items that would not be included in that, in that number. So that number is quite different. So on to goal number one. It might be a little bit hard to see up there. I tried to blow it up as large as I could. I'm not going to read this whole thing, but basically the old strategic communications plan had four goals. I consolidated that this year into three. And the main reason why that is, is we really want, if we're going to have a plan, it's really important to me and the crisis communications response team, who is also a big part of putting this plan together, is we want it to be useful. We don't want it to just be an exercise that we go through once a year and then we never look at it again. We want it to really spell out what the city is doing and use it as a resource that we can then communicate out to the public, which is the, the whole reason why we're, why we're here and why we're doing what we're doing. So the first goal number one is to fortify communication channels to meet our current needs. We have three sub-strategies within those. And I'll just mention that is to, number one is to utilize the city's website as an archive for information. Number two is to enhance direct communications with residents, business and community members. And then the third is to support and grow, support the growth and organization of the volunteer hub. And each of these have sub-initiatives that you can explore. And these are all, again, trying to be very action oriented and achievable, given our current staffing capacity, as you know. So goal number two is to improve accessibility, community engagement and information sharing. And the, there are four strategies here with each has have initiatives. The first is to continue updating content on the city's website. And the sounds similar to goal number one, but these, in the, the summary, you can read how the, there is a specific orientation to each of them. So they are, they each have different initiatives that speak to different aspects of what that goal actually means. Second is to increase opportunities for non-visual communication. This is a, this has been a big topic of mine and a priority of mine, again, kind of speaking to that ADA accessibility. While the vast majority of Montpelier residents do not have visual impairments, several do. And we want to make sure that we are reaching everybody as best we can. The second is to, or the third is to improve coordination with community organizations. And the fourth is to develop and implement a seasonal, seasonal message schedule. Again, when we had more admin staff that were part of the communications team, we would be sending out pretty frequent Facebook posts and front porch forum posts. And just in, in the effort to conserve time and, and energy and where priorities have had to, to shift due to accommodate staffing. We have considerably scaled back on a lot of that. And so the, the initiatives in this goal, and I'll speak to that closer to the end, is to really hone in on what are, what are our biggest, where are we getting the biggest bang for our buck? And then so goal number three is to improve crisis communication capacity through technology and training. As I mentioned, our crisis communications response team has, they have eight members and they have been a big part of helping develop this plan and making it really, again, useful for everybody. We, we want this to be a, not only a, a plan, but a handbook for the, the members that are doing a lot of the work communications wise. And again, also as a communications tool in and of itself to, to show people how to get information from us and, and with us. So the three strategies here, I'm missing the highlight on number three. But the first is to implement training schedule for CCRT members. Training is super important and the work that we do, we have very high standards that we have to uphold, especially for sending out VT alerts and other messages like that that have, they're pretty high stakes. And so we do use the incident command system framework for managing those types of emergency incidents. And so we want to make sure that all of our members are at least trained to the two hundred level. And the second is to use existing technology to improve efficiency. So in the city manager's office, we have been working with a very dedicated resident, Alex Keller, who is very graciously donated his time to help us improve in the technology that we, that we use. And so we're really excited to implement a lot of changes and hopefully just to streamline it both, both for us and the user interface, in user interface for the public to make it easier to navigate some of the, the touchpoints. And then strategy number three is to continue to coordinate and collaborate with partnering stakeholder groups. Chief Libby and I had the opportunity to meet with the USGS Stream Gauge Stakeholders Group a couple weeks back. And that group is a collection of basically anybody that uses the Stream Gauge data in their day-to-day work like we do. We want to really make sure that we are connected and coordinating as a group. You know, if, if and when the next flood happens so that we are all ready and prepared. And also to continue to leverage our shared resources, given really uncertain federal funding. Just thinking back to what someone from the National Weather Service who was at our group said, they have lost in Vermont, they had lost a quarter of their staff. So that is, that has been a huge blow to their capacity. And so we're really hoping to, again, just improve our coordination so that we are, we are ready. So again, like I had mentioned earlier, we want to be able to make sure that we're measuring what we're doing so that we know we're, what, what we're doing is, is working. And so the four, these are the four primary areas where we are going to focus our communications efforts moving forward. So the notify me system on our website is a great feature because it allows people to opt in to what kind of messaging they want to get from the city. So for instance, this is how you get the DPW newsletter. And so we have several different subscription lists. So you can subscribe to the DPW news. We also have a general one for if you want to get all city updates. That's where we send out the city manager's weekly report. So things like that, our website, oh, and then we can measure that easily because it tells us the number of subscribers that we, that we get. So that's, that's a very easy thing to, easy thing to keep track of. Similarly, with our website, we have Google Analytics built into that. So we can track what is the hotspots, what people are looking at, where they're going and adjust as, as necessary. So for instance, we have our rotating popular links as things come and go and the seasons change. We'll be able to update that and keep that really fresh and responsive to the needs of the people who are accessing it. And similarly, as I mentioned with the Stream Gauge stakeholders, we're partnering, partnering really strongly with Montpelier Alive to reach our business community and the VT Alert Network. Again, it's easy to track our numbers of subscribers. And I also wanted to mention too, there is a neat feature that, well, on the, on the backend side that we can see. We have, like I mentioned, we have almost thirteen thousand subscribers. Not all of those numbers that it's calling are active or email addresses. So we can see, for instance, I actually sent one out this afternoon. We had a cement truck rollover at the corner of Dog River and Memorial Drive. And just about half of the numbers that we'd sent that alert out to were reachable. So we have a little bit of work there too, just to make sure that the people who have signed up are at, their numbers are, are current. And if not, then we can make sure that we are broadening our reach there. And so just briefly in summary, the, as, as I mentioned earlier, the budget reductions and staffing capacity has really limited our level of service. And so this new strategic communications plan takes that into account and is setting us up for success. So connecting community members with, via those four main channels, as I just mentioned, is our top priority. Because, you know, something that we also hear is that, you know, if, if information is, is hard to find or that there are too many places to go, we really want to hone in on those four and say, you know, this is, if you're going to do anything, stay connected with these four. And that, just to reiterate, staff are dedicated to the city and are doing our, our absolute best to provide the highest quality of service that we can. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Evelyn. Jim?
I want to say thank you for putting that button on that they can hit and get all our email addresses at once on the council.
Very welcome.
I mean, that way, nobody's missed if somebody just goes, forget somebody, but that was awesome. Thank you. And thanks for this report.
Adrian.
Thank you for this. You, this is a lot of work. Huge amount of work for one person and I know, know it's, you know, with the staffing, it's difficult. So in my mind, I was just thinking of an opportunity. I don't know if the city has ever done this, but through, I know through Montpelier High School, we have a program called Community-Based Learning. And they have opportunities in the fall and the spring where they're placed with employers to work on very specific projects. And going through even like your goal number two, I was like, oh my gosh, I saw like five very specific projects that a high schooler could come in and one, it could build their resume, which, you know, communication, social media, marketing, but it could also help you. And it's, I'm thinking of like, you know, these high school students don't need a huge amount of training because this is what they do every day. But they could just come in and just help and get credits for school while supporting our city. And I don't know if that's something that you all have ever done, but I feel like if anything, this is like the best like department to, to partner with. And I think you'd be an excellent coach and, and, you know, supervisor for, for our high school students. And I, I'm sure U thirty two has something like this also, but I think that I would encourage the city to explore that. And I think Matt McLean is the coordinator at the high school.
Ellen is volunteers her time as a staff advisor on the youth comedy. And that company members really love her. So she, she has very good communication with the youth. Thank you for the presentation. And when I was checking your plan, I thought, is there anything we can pass? So for example, maybe you like doing it. It doesn't feel like it's like something you think you can pass, but podcast? I saw that like a before and like recording it, editing it, like testing it, it's really a long time. So it might be one of the things maybe consider, just like checking the impact of it. And if we can stop or pause some of the initiatives, just give you more time to focus on other things, maybe it will be a good strategy. But again, I don't know, maybe already talk with Kelly this. And the second thing is we receive some concerns about city website before, especially a specific population, like, I don't want to say old, I am old too. But they are really struggling to find things. So is there any plan to make it a little bit simpler? Because I'm having my MBA and during communication and media class, I did for my final project. So I know that there are other ways we can make it more friendly user. Are there any plans for that?
Oh, yes, absolutely. That's one of the sections that I want to build out further in the, at the plan itself to actually spell out what, what those steps are. I've actually been working a lot with Amy from our, our senior center for exactly that reason. And in one of the, one of my favorite little like tips from communications that I've carried with me throughout is I, I included this in a, in a little graphic in the plan. But it, the website best practices says things should be no more than three scope, three scrolls, three clicks and three sentences away from learning. So we're having, we have a lot of work to do to meet those goals, but that is exactly a, a big priority.
Yeah, I'm very happy to hear that. Great start. And the last thing, I just, when I saw the number of the membership to from Port Four, it is very good. Like maybe more than, how, like how many people live here? I don't know, but more than our population, maybe it's like, so we can reach out so many different people using it. And I wanna, again, maybe there's a plan, but I want to see especially with the city manager hiring process. Can we use for, for, for more to update public? But I've just heard But I've just heard that some people think that we postpone the hiring. They, they uh, somehow um, understood that we, because it will be in the middle of the budget season. We stop all the process, we are not thinking anything after budget, which is. Not right information. So maybe if we start using from porch forum updating this process. Uh, in addition to our website, which it has only um, like um, you know. Subcommittee timeline, we haven't updated that page yet. But I really want to see some city hiring process update on the front porch forum. Um, and I bet you have. Greater ideas than this, but I just want to share these three things with you. Thank you again.
Of course.
Carrie.
Yeah, thank you so much Evelyn. I really appreciate the work that you've put into this and the communication from the city has been. Just getting better and better all the time and and I appreciate your, your eye to improvement. That you're not just saying, okay, we figured it out. Now we're just gonna do this. You want to get better all the time. Really appreciate that. So a couple of things, I do want to give the city credit for. A number of CBL students who have worked with the city in the past. I don't know if you ever have, but I do think it's a great idea. And there are plenty of people in this, in City Hall who can tell you about their experiences with that. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to say was. Um, kind of following up on what Helen said about the city manager search process, I'm hoping that you will be working with our consultant to. To figure out what's the best. Way to do that and and specifically on our website. So if there's a one spot where they can go and it's updated. Very frequently, even if the updates, uh, even if we don't have much in the way of update, but you know, dated like this week. Something, you know, so that people know that it is moving along.
Definitely, absolutely. We, yeah, we're just um, emailing this morning, actually.
Good.
Uh, about that. So yes, that is the plan.
Yeah, wonderful. Thank you.
One more suggestion. Um, so for the notify me, um, I think that's like super hyper local in terms of. It, I always get confused between the notify me and the other, the VT Alert. Like the notify me is, it's specific, it could be specific to your neighborhood, right? Is that the one?
No, which so, yeah, are you thinking maybe of Neighbor Net with the?
Like notify alerts, like if there was a water main in my area, like I would just get that.
That's VT, yes.
That's VT Alert.
Has that capability. Yes. Notify me is anybody that wants to subscribe.
Oh, okay. So one, I think there might be some education on that in terms of like which. Want to sign up for.
Yep.
Um, cause I get very confused. But I think there could also be connection, you know, as we start ramping up the um, Montpelier Neighborhood Net group through the commission. Like my neighborhood is starting to build, we have like five or six different coordinators. So. It would be nice to see like what currently exists. I mean, maybe not sharing names. I don't know how we would do this, but I'm thinking of like where, where are the gaps? And then how can we partner with these. Local neighborhood coordinators to help increase those lists, because I think that's a powerful tool. Um, so I would add that to like, just another opportunity for local collaboration to. Increase those numbers because that's where we get our information.
Absolutely. Um, and also to to clarify for the, uh, about the VT Alert. So the, so VT Alert is. I recommend, like, absolutely everybody should be signed up for VT Alerts, because that's where you're gonna get like a flood is happening, you know, evacuate now sort of information. Um, and that has the ability to, like you said, if there's a water main break on um, you know, Wheelock Street. And it only affects three households, we can send a VT Alert to only those three households, which is great. Um, but if it's a larger thing, we have the oper- we have the, again, the option to send it to that entire Montpelier, the three, thirteen thousand. Um, people, uh, and so the main function of of VT Alert is it's, so that's a state-run um, program. And it's specifically for like emergencies. What's awesome about notify me is we will also send out in- information like that, but that goes to everybody. So if you, and anybody that wants to to sign up, and that's where we put things that are obviously way more than just emergencies.
Like today with that car accident, notify me or VT Alert?
That was VT Alert. Yes.
Yeah, like, I just want to echo the way, um, you're saying Adrian about the Montpelier Neighborhood Net, and I know you're already working with them, right? But like, it feels like that's so cho- such an opportunity to get more people signed up for these things and. You know, particularly when there are those local alerts, it could follow the same kind of. Uh, self-identified neighborhoods that people come up with.
Absolutely.
All right. Oh, go ahead, Sal. Sorry.
Uh, Ellen, um. Uh, I echo everybody's appreciation for, you use the term we a lot, but. I wonder, I, I get the Vermont, uh, the VT Alerts, um, and the notify me stuff and, you know, VT Alert. Asks for confirmation, I, I just wonder. How they use that and it, I, but I don't notice it so much on notify me.
Yeah, so that's, that's a great point. So when you get a VT Alert, like, so it sends, you got, you sign up to for your cell phone, you get the cell. The notification and it'll say press yes or press one to confirm. That, if you do that, that tells me that you've got it. So that tells me it's working.
Measure effectiveness.
Yes, exactly.
Does that happen on notify me? I don't.
It does not.
It does not.
No.
But can that be added? I mean, that would be valuable.
I can.
I don't know how many people do it, but I don't even know if people understand that it's, it would be useful if they did it, maybe.
Yeah.
Maybe more explanation on the Vermont Alert sign up or.
Absolutely. That's a great, that's a great point, because that is an important point for us, because we want to make sure that we're. You're, you're actually receiving the information that we're sending. So it um, is very important that people click that, click the confirmation. And I, yeah, of course.
What is the time? You, sometimes you hit that and it says, time is done.
Oh, yeah. So they are, they do have time expiring um. Based on the type of alert that it it is. So for instance, if it's a, if it's a road closure based on a traffic accident. That um, is not going to be as um. At as long of a duration as a um, as a flood, for instance. So the state has the option, opportunity to keep it. Keep the alert open. So when you're then clicking yes, but you've got the message an hour later. It still tells me that you got it, but you didn't get it in like, right when I sent it.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
All right. Thanks. Once again, great work and other, uh, uh, pretty much every time. Uh, for you folks uh, out in Zoom land, every, every time you hear one of our. City employees talking about their job, chances are we're talking, hearing from someone who's got a couple of full-time jobs. Including Evelyn. All right. Next up, Strategic Plan Workshop.
Great. Um, so we are making a really good time. But I, I don't know if that's gonna jinx us or not, but I'm just gonna, you know, save that before we even, you know, get started. Um, so in front of you, uh, you have some materials um, to review. Um, you have seen iterations of these um, items. Um, so the tables um, are reflective of the sticky note exercise that we did. Um, and is reflective of the curation of those sticky notes. So just kind of taking a look at. The city plan, considering staff foreclos, and just trying to really think about what would be effective in reaching um, those goals. Um, and so I wanted to, to take a quick review of those items and make sure that. They seem to be in alignment with what you were thinking. Um, and then you also have a draft plan, um, that is in the works. We did have a leadership team meeting this morning. Um, so as you're reviewing um, this plan. The leadership team is reviewing it as well. Um, and so that's why you received a different iteration this afternoon or early evening. Um, to incorporate those elements um, from the team into it. Um, and so I can kind of review what some of those items are for you. But really for tonight, what I want to do is. Take a look at the tables, make sure they make sense, uh, maybe identify where there were some modifications to the sticky note. So we did um, either change language a little bit to um. Work with the suggestions so that then we could, you know, like, do the thing. Um, and then also take a look at the, the plan you have in front of you, because they, based on. What we have in the tables, I wanted to recast um, our mission, vision and values for this year. Um, so that it is in alignment with what we're doing. Um, you'll also note that the, the, the last page sort of beginning with the end in mind is sort of what we can expect these outcomes to be. Um, and so I want to make sure that that also is a lot in alignment with what they're thinking. Um, and so what it was hoping for is that we kind of get into the tables first, then review the mission, vision and values. Um, and then from there, maybe jump into some of the KPIs that we have listed. Um, just to make sure that that makes sense. You'll notice that in this iteration, there are uh, fewer of them. Just because we did bet them for the ability to do them and report out. So. We really were conscious about making sure that anything that's right on the table at this point are things that we can do. Um, the other thing that I do also want to know, uh, because we talked about this a little bit, um, in our meeting this morning is the timelines. So we will certainly try for the timeline that is proposed here. Um, but there may be some shifts in the timeline. Uh, so that, you know, for instance, the, the TIFT uh, reviews, the tax, or some finance district review application. May not be in zero to three months, but it may be in the balance of a year. Um, also want to note that uh, this plan is ambitious. Um, and so we're gonna try, um, but you know, we're really treating this first year. Um, as kind of like a, a baseline year, so that then we're able to kind of establish, you know, what we've been able to do well, where we can improve. Um, and just bring those reports back to you. So um, we just want to make sure that there's kind of a general understanding that we're. Gonna try our best to get everything on the list done, but we will need your help in even prioritizing further within each of the priorities. Does that all make sense? Okay, cool. All right. So why don't we start um, with the tables? And I thought what I might do, just to help um, speed the process along. Was um, just identify where there were uh, modifications from our staff review. Um, that might also give you sort of a, a chance to set eyes on each of them um, and review them. So why don't we start there? So I'm gonna just start off with housing. Um. Yeah.
Alex, later. Thank you.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I am.
Okay. Um, so mostly this, this table remained intact. Um, but if you look at um, the first strategy in column six to nine months. Um, oh, and I actually should back up just a minute. The other thing that we did is you'll notice that there are numbers in each of the strategies. And so those numbers tie to the goal. So there are in cer- certain instances that this strategy is tying to the goal. And there are multiple, you know, goals associated with that strategy. But I wanted to be able to provide. You know, the sort of insight into, you know, what strategy goes with which goal. Because the way that the, the table is, is we're, you know, looking at the time-bound elements of those strategies. And it might not be in alignment with the, you know, goal in that row. Yes.
But yeah, about that, I'm just trying to sort this out. So there's. So there's a column of goals, but the, but the other columns are not linked to that column.
Correct.
So could, so we can't just look across and see goal number one, what's gonna happen zero to three months? What's gonna happen three to six?
Could. There, we, we can, we can structure it that way. Once we decide on, you know, how we want this to look, for sure. And I can bring that back in the next iteration. Um, I'm, I'm hoping that we'll be able to kind of work through. Um, the details of the plan that you have in front of you, and then I can bring back a final plan next time for approval. So that's a good comment, just to make sure that we can get the alignment um, right um, for the time period. So the way that this is right now is, you know, we would have the strategy that we would be considering within zero to three months. But they range for the goals that they apply to. So um, and I also note that within the draft plan that you have in front of you for consideration. Um, we did put the strategies in that plan for each goal, so you can kind of see them in just in text form rather than just in the. The table form here. Um, so just looking at the, just the, the modifications that we would propose to staff um, in the six to nine month category. Um, there's the, the first item in the row, eliminate, eliminate municipal fees for housing construction. And so. Rather than um, eliminate, because we would really want to evaluate. The elimination of those fees first before we took action. So.
Hmm.
Yeah. So I mean, those are some of the things that we, you know, just, we appreciate the, the uh, recommendation, but we also want to make sure that, you know, we're providing you with some analysis around these items. Um, and the other thing that I do want to note is that we will use this, um, once we do have approval from you to. Um, populate the city work plans at the departmental level. Um, and uh, also from there, we would be looking to kind of assign sort of the council roles to them. So. There's more to come on this. Um, it also will help populate all of our future agendas.
Uh, just a quick question about the timelines. Are, are they the starting point? Or the ending point or something in between?
I think it's actually probably there's something in between. You know, because if we're being completely honest, like we're already into July. And so that would be the zero to three month window here. And so while we want to kind of keep the item time bound. Um, we also may end up bleeding into like the three to six or the six to nine. So the, the assumption is that, you know, we'll try our best to meet. The sort of strategy within that timeframe, but it might be something that continues for the balance of um, the year. But we would certainly report out on the status of that item.
That's true.
And so that's also where I think the, the benchmarking comes in, just to kind of really establish where we are and where we're going. Um, so the next um, item that we thought would be good to modify um, is in the same column, very popular, the six to nine month. Column here, things are happening. Um, so use development agreement program to implement housing. So. We thought that it probably would be a good idea to review and revise. The development agreement program, and we thought that for a couple of different reasons, but you know, we did bring forward um. You know, some plans and, you know, we really probably should really take a look at the policy and think about the projects that would be sort of incorporated into that program. And then how it, it aligns with CHIP, because that wasn't really in existence, you know, previously. So. We would want to make sure that we were bringing forward kind of an assessment for, you know, some recommendations for you to consider for that particular program.
Carrie.
I'm sorry, I'm still having a little trouble.
Yes.
Um. Coordinating these documents.
Mm-hmm.
So the strategies that are in this text version are not necessarily the strategies that are in the table.
Well.
And so is the table, the, the actual strategies that you want to use and the, the text was all the ones that were on the sticky note?
Uh, so no, so the um, the plan itself um, does have these strategies, but they're by um, goal. And so they're, they are a little bit, like if you were trying to align them, like for instance, if you were looking at the ho- housing, you would look at goal one. And then we would be looking at the zero to three utilize recommendations. And so what I tried to do was make sure that I had. All of the strategies that would be associated with that.
In here?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. But I, but this was this kind of the starting point for that, this table here. Until we were looking at them sequentially, it would be sort of taking up the table, making sure we go with that. And then kind of making sure they flow into the plan appropriately. Um, the next change that we um, was suggested would be to e- evaluate uh, tax on short-term rentals. So again, just making sure that we're bringing forward information on, you know, what that tax might look like. You know, what the compliance issues would be. There's a lot to it. So we just, you know, we would love to say, sure, we're gonna. We're gonna get this done this year, but we just really want to be thoughtful about how we proceed. And so just the, the thoughts on that.
Yeah, Adrian.
Um, well, there it is.
So if you're, I mean, yes, it's very smart to evaluate before you implement. And so for goal one. They consider instituting a, a, again, building tax, maybe we should change that to just evaluate.
Sure. Yeah, we can totally get that.
Right? I, I don't know if you want to keep that consistent or just, I don't know.
One of the things I was thinking about though is like, you know, going back to that short-term rentals thing, right? Like if we evaluate it. And we complete the evaluation of it, can't we make a decision about it? Right? And yeah, I recognize that that might take additional time to implement, but it strikes me that at the end of these evaluation processes, there should be.
Should be an answer.
Point, right? But it's not just like evaluated and then next year, maybe we pick it up. It's like evaluate it and say, that's a good idea or a bad idea. Let's vote on it. But it's not just like evaluated and then next year, maybe we pick it up. It's like evaluate it and say, that's a good idea or a bad idea. Let's vote on it. You know, and I I guess I would say the same with what you're talking about right now, vacancy tax, like we should totally evaluate a vacancy tax. But when we're done evaluating it, we should vote on whether or not we want to have a vacancy tax.
So I guess then it should align. So that if I'm reading this right, so I'm looking at this packet, not the table. And if I'm looking at housing, I see the goal. Then I'm going to look, this is how my brain is working. So then I'm going to look down and see I should be able to find that vacant tax here somewhere under the strategy, hold on.
So let me see if I can find it for you. So if we're looking at
How the page four.
Yep.
So so what I would look for in here is under how the
Yep. So if you're looking at housing and you're looking at you wanted to see the vacant tech, it would be under goal three.
Okay. Okay, so under goal three, I see so three. And then the strategy. And then it should line up to this document that just three, we should instead of the like circle goal, we should have that number. So I feel like three. One, two, three, four, three. Right? So that's the third one down, consider instituting a vacant building tag.
Yep.
So I'm not going to say the third bullet down, like it's
Yeah, so we can, we can totally work on the form.
If we have a goal and then our strategy is consider instituting a vacant building tag. And then what I would look for, continue the thought process under KPIs for goal three. I would want to see a KPI attached to that strategy, right? So are we going like we shouldn't have that action, like what are we going to do after we evaluate it? We should right? Like we should have KPI that's attached to each of the strategies, I think.
We can do that. So I I think that, you know, the way that the the KPIs for consideration, our structure right now is they sort of align at the goal level. Just because they, you know, we're trying to implement the tracking of the KPIs and also keep them pretty simple for this first round or baseline. But I also, and then in terms of that particular example, looking at the vacancy tax, like there might be, there would probably, if if you did choose to implement, there would be KPIs associated with that, because we would want to know how we're doing. But we're still at the decision element. And so I I could see, I could see it both ways. And I think that, you know, we're trying to figure out a way forward so we can kind of measure what we're doing, so that then, you know, we can kind of make sure that we are, we can demonstrate that we're achieving the goals. And I think it then is just trying to sort of massage how we want to apply that and at what level, like how far, how deep do we go?
I think what you're saying makes sense, you know, if if we get to the point of saying, okay, we're taking up the decision on vacant buildings tax. Once we make a decision, then that sets up a all bunch of steps from making the decision to make it happen.
Yeah. And I can say that this process has been super helpful in terms of informing our conversation, even at the staff level, that really think about and wrap our heads around like, well, you know, how are we presenting this? Like, what does this mean? Is this achievable? You know, what are we doing to demonstrate, you know, how much, how well, has anybody better off like? Are we, is the work that we're doing translating? You know, what we're hoping for is that completing this annualized plan will then flow into the budget cycle, and then we'll be able to provide investments in these items. Also, it will help inform our city council agendas going forward. So there are a lot of things here that will then start to populate on your agendas. And so it really gives us the guidance that we need and also kind of gives us some tools to have the conversation. So if I, if if we could, I'll just, do we have any questions generally on the strategies that are within each of the goals? I'm going to keep going through them if that's okay. Okay. So I'm just moving on to the infrastructure one. This one is a lot. Kurt is online, just in case there are questions.
This is what I can't question about is this is, this is the curated version.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so there's a lot here. But if you, you know, kind of take a sort of even a higher view of this, so like what you did then in the housing item, that this sort of marine bar that we had at the bottom, like you kind of highlighted sort of the key elements within the housing goal. And so we might also do that within each of these, just to kind of like summarize, like one of the key strategies that we're, you know, deploying to get these goals done. Because there are several instances where they're, they they apply to multiple goals. So just I'm going to kind of go through the the staff recommendations for changes. And then feel free to, you know, ask questions as we go, if that's helpful. Okay. So let's see here. So the the first sort of change, just to note, is in this first column, the fourth one down, improve communications to city residents and businesses. And so we shifted that a little bit to really highlight large projects. Just because that's where the greatest impact is. You know, we are doing a lot of projects. And, you know, we just want to be mindful of how we're communicating that out. I mean, if there is a question at any time, we're happy to answer, but we also want to make sure that we're, you know, being smart with time. So we thought that we'd maybe focus more on large projects rather than them all. And then, you know, we wanted to prioritize, you know, Evelyn just did a really fantastic job of highlighting, you know, sort of the notification channels in the work that she's doing. And so we wanted to call that out. So we sort of added the promotion of membership in EPW news or notify me. And then also, one of the things that we could talk about a little bit was just the education of those elements too. And so that might be part of the communication strategy within that particular item. So we can get even more weightier, but that I think we probably would save for the staff work plans. But keep it kind of high level for you. So I'm just going to keep moving along here. So the the next one is in the three to six month band here. The only thing that I adjusted is that incrementally increase the annual paving budget to 1.2 million. It says three years. That is really aggressive. Our current plan has $725,000 in it. And so to work towards the 1.2, we're going to try. And maybe we'll meet it faster, but we wanted it to align with the five year capital improvement plan. There are, there is another item that does sort of address the investment. But I think we've got to kind of wait and see what our resources are, where local options taxes, how we want to, you know, sort of apply the resources that we have during the budget process, but just setting a realistic goal there. So the next one, it sort of indicates launching a public outreach campaign is, you know, how it was initially framed. And so we wanted to actually just maybe focus on improving public outreach first. And just focusing on the investments in roads and water infrastructure. And we will be bringing the conversation about comparing cost of repairs versus rebuilds in kind of the assessment conversations we'll be having on each of the elements of the capital plan or the master plans. So those things will be communicated during these meetings. But we just wanted to kind of maybe bookend that one a little bit, so it was just maybe a little more manageable and possible. Let's see, the ArcGIS project visualization, we really like that one, and we do have a lot of data. We would want to, we we want to, rather than identifying ArcGIS, we wanted to sort of just say, we're going to work with existing data. So it just gives us a little bit more flexibility to bring back visualization of the work that we're doing. Let's see. So then just moving along here. In the six to nine month column down at the bottom, the complete formation of a stormwater utility. We identified that we would plan for the formation of a stormwater utility. That's something we need to do, but we, it's a lift. And so we want to be really thoughtful about how we do it. So rather than have it be complete, we want to make sure that the plan's in place and we're starting to implement.
Now, Kelly or Kurt, we we figured out that we don't need a charter change to do the stormwater utility. Is that right?
I believe so, but I can double check.
Because if we're, if we are going to do a stormwater utility and we want to start money flowing in to do that work, obviously we want to get that done, because until it's in place, we can't you know, build into the budget, so.
Yeah.
So I think this timing is right for this.
Oh, for sure, yeah. A lot to talk about here. And it's a lot to look at too, so it sort of hurts your eyes a little bit. So sorry about that.
So I think what we're talking about infrastructure and we have an ambitious goal, I think one of the strategies that is kind of sticking out, I mean, that's important, right? Do you have all these targets that you want to, you know, increase? You know, your plan to and and your, to get to steady state, but it's under, if you can have a better way to describe it, so it's all in a row of two, but it's under three to six months. It says improved public outreach, explaining the importance of investing in roads and water infrastructure. So I think it's going to be very important to explain to the public. Because I think eventually we'll have to have some way. You know, we'll, we'll have, we'll be asking for money in some way. But my, I I'm very, I think this is really important, but I think it's understated in this plan, because one, it says improve public outreach. Explaining the importance of investing in roads and water infrastructure. So improve what? So I don't know what the baseline is. I don't know what we're trying to improve and how are we going to know we're successful? And that's like a, like a community, you know, opinion piece of what do they know now? Which I'm assuming would be very minimal, right? And then how do we test their, you know, education on roads and water infrastructure? So I think there's a lot in that one statement that really needs to be pulled apart, because when we look at all the other activities that we want to accomplish that cost money, no one's going to pay for it if they don't understand what it's for. So I think that's just a, I think that one is very important. I I would like to have a little bit more of a plan of where we are now. And then how, where are we going to go?
Can I ask the question though? Like when you say where we are now, are you talking about like in the community's understanding of our road or our infrastructure, not like what, where we are in the PCI?
No.
Okay, the on the baseline of people's understanding.
Yes.
Okay.
So I think people need to understand in a elementary way what water, you know, what the roads mean, like, you know, all we hear from our communities, oh my God, the roads are terrible. Well, why is that? Like, what does that mean? What does it mean to repair the roads? I mean, Kirk can probably do a whole thesis on like road reconstruction, right? And like how much it costs. And same thing with like the water infrastructure, like what does it like? To explain to the public, to have like an education program about what does it mean to repair a road and why does it cost? You know, eight million dollars, like I I just think there needs to be a better education around that, because we're going to have to invest. And people are not going to want to invest if they don't know why.
I would like to add to that. They're going to want to know what it means to them individually.
Yeah.
On their tax bill. So.
So that's, that's really helpful. And also, you know, I think one of the things that we talked about this morning with the leadership team was just even some of these sort of assessments, you know, I mean, like so we are going to be coming forward with some pretty major presentations. And so some of those elements are sort of in the basic sort of education. So we may, you know, weave those into the presentations. But then as those presentations come forward, then that would be part of the outreach component. But the, the thing that I've also been thinking about is that as we get into the budget process, you know, and the justification for our requests, there, there is ample or well, has a D C amp, but there's a lot of opportunity to tell our story and make sure that there is a, you know, an outreach campaign during that time. I mean, typically what we would do, and so we can build this out, I guess, the answer is like, yeah, we can totally do a lot with this and tell our story, because we do have a story to tell. You know, I think in terms of like the the why, you know, why are we doing this? Why are we investing? Why is this necessary? Why is it the core municipal service? You know, why is it essential?
And I think once that information is presented in a way that, right, because I'm not a road expert. I'm not an expert in water infrastructure of city municipalities, right? So once it is explained in a way that like I can understand it for, just I'm going to give myself as an example. Once I can understand it and talk about it in a way that's one factual, logical and makes sense. I feel like as a city council, then I can then go out and hold my community meetings and like spread the word. And we can utilize all of our networks to share that as an education strategy. So it's not just Kurt presenting to city council, but it's us taking that motion and like spreading it among our constituents, because you know, everyone here holds community meetings, but I think it's just a matter of how do we like share that information so the public understands in a way that makes sense to them? Because as humans, all we care about is ourselves, like what's in it for me, right? Like what Jim said, it's all about marketing and communications. So what's in it for me? Why should I care? And
Any cents, this is sad to my
Does it add to my tax bill how much? And then what am I going to get for it?
Yeah, I mean, if you say two cents and it's going to go all to roads, then they and they can evaluate, oh, that means this many dollars to me, but I want the roads. And that helps them buy it, because we got to tie it to a cost, because everybody, the bottom line in America about everything is money.
So I should just in that particular one, I'm trying to get at for that strategy. It's very broad and it's vague here.
You know, what's really interesting in the last meeting, we had the PCI meeting, we got the presentation where it talked about like, I just saw you put down a new road. Right? But in terms of like actually like filling the cracks and like doing that on a schedule that actually saves you money on the long run. And I feel like, Kelly, when you say that's a really aggressive target, right? Like to get to 1.2 within five years, like it might be, but I think what I would be interested in is what does it cost me as the homeowner? But what is the, but what is the point at which not spending money costs money? Right? Like I think that's the other thing that's really interesting. And we can talk about how aggressive do we want to be? Like if we said we want to save money this year, so we're not going to fill those cracks with tar, that's going to cost us money in like three years. Right? And so it's just, I think, thinking about it in that way as we evaluate. How aggressive we want to be will be valuable.
Yeah, apparently.
So what I heard from Mr. Two President so can join me too. So even if there's a increase in taxes, if we spend it, infrastructure, people are okay with it. The only thing they want to know how we spent that money and where we spend that money. So they have to, they want to see if their taxes are spent in the right places in the infrastructure. So I think it is important. It is kind of a transparency. But I haven't seen anything like that so far. So I don't know what we can do about it. And
What do you mean? You haven't seen anything that sets forth what people's tax dollars are being spent on? That's, that's what
No, 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 that's completely wrong. Interpretation, what I'm saying, I'm saying that if there will be a tax increase and it is related to infrastructure, people are okay to pay higher taxes. But they want to know where that tax increase will go. Like a very transparent, clear, specific, okay, if we increase the tax that much, we will use it infrastructure that much and you will see that development.
I think infrastructure is a, is a broad term. And and people want, they want to know specifically.
Yeah.
What's part of the infrastructure? How is someone understood?
Yeah, I agree with that. The, that information is definitely in all of the budget documents. It is, it is all there. But how many people are going to sit down and pull it all out and try to fit and figure it out? It's, it's hard. And so so I I really like this idea of kind of public education outreach around where are those taxes going and what improvements are being made to paving or whatever it is? And that it's kind of up on all of us to be able to understand that and then simplify it and explain it. And and so I think that the staff can help with that, but I think also it's really like, we need to understand it so then we can explain it in in conversations with people and it makes sense to them.
I guess like too, like this is one of those areas where there's, uh, at least on the paving thing. Like there's a really specific goal and a really specific way to measure it, like we're at fifty or sixty-five or something like that. PCI right now, we wanna get to seventy and Berry Town's at seventy-five, right? Like, we know. Where we are and we can decide what we wanna do to get where we wanna be.
I, I often say. That it's paving is like fireworks. Every dollar you spend, you see it. You, you, you know, you get a bigger firework show and you spend more money on it, simply. You wanna spend more money on the roads, that's the way you get better roads.
Well, I also think that's kind of what Taylor was getting at, like she wants, like constituents want to be able to. You know what I mean? See those dollars that work, you know, see the investment. And I think that with paving you can do that and I. So then this actual what Adrian was saying in terms of this particular item, so one of the things that I would like to bring back to you is um, kind of like a. A rules and responsibility sheet, so it just will kind of like show like, you know, what the council item would be associated with this goal or strategy. But then also what the staff kind of like work, you know, would be, and so like I can see where this one might be built out a little bit more, just so that we can be more clear on. You know, what we would be providing to you for this and also for the public, um, because we want that too. We do want people to be informed. Um, and I think that, you know, it just helps for better decisions, so um, we're up for it.
They're, they're also gonna wanna know, when is that gonna relate to my street? And that's what, you know.
Yeah.
Trying to set up with a five-year plan and something like that, because people are gonna want, you know, I I'm fine with paying for this. But is my street seven years down the road? And they're gonna, you know, people are gonna wanna know when it affects, like you said, everybody's are thinking of their own little city. So.
Yeah, um.
So I think this applies, is going to apply to all of the strategic plan in a way as we try to link what's in the plan to our budget development process. Because there's gonna be lots of places where we said in our plan, we we wanna do this, it's gonna cost money. And so here's how much it's gonna cost. And so then. Part of what we have to do is to be able to explain that to people, not just this is when your street will get paved, which, I mean. That's really important and they will wanna know that, but also. Where, you know, why are we spending more on? I don't know, whatever it is, you know, something that's not quite so visible, but that doesn't need to be expanded. So, but I think that's, it's, it's a good item to have in general for all of this, not just for this one particular.
No, Sarah.
Hi, there are a couple of really uh, great capital presentations that we've given, um, that really outline about the paving. Um, Zach did a really good job. I'm happy to send those to you all so that you can share them with constituents if that would help at least start a baseline. And then this year, as we head into budget season, um, with this freshly developed strategic plan and without the ClearGov software. I will be rebuilding a budget book um, to get us out in front of everyone. And so if you have recommendations or these things that I'm hearing, um, you know, I really will try to highlight. Um, and educate as part of that process and try to drill that budget book down, um. The one that we've been using with ClearGov is fantastic and has lots of um, interactive abilities to transmit through, but this one will be. Um, different than that. And so I wanna be sure as we build it, I can help educate the public, um, as well as council. And we will be tying your strategic goals to different line items within the budget, um, to ensure, you know. There are metrics to measure again and that there's money in there to work towards these goals. So I just, you know, I. Will be in that process and starting that budget book um, development shortly. And so I wanna make sure I can get. Um, as much clear information out in front of everybody as possible.
I also just to dovetail what Sarah was saying, so our intention um, is, you know, along with sort of briefing on the um, capital improvement items. You know, frequently and often, um, when we did have the capital meeting, um, that committee expressed the desire to meet monthly. Um, so we're gonna do that. And so you're, you welcome to attend those meetings and publicists too, and then that I think will help track. But then also, we're gearing up for budget development. To have workshops and advance the process so that we can get sort of the data and details to you in advance. So then, you know, when we get into the thick of it, we've got the information at our fingertips and can really kind of have a good conversation about where we need to go.
Before the second August um, council meeting, so just plug for that.
Jim. I'm thinking of two things. One, as we get closer to the budget, probably gonna have to have two of those monthly meetings of question and answers. But the other, other thing I'm starting to think of is. Are we just going to admit that we probably are gonna be meeting every Wednesday? Cause I would like, you know, we are almost, and I mean, let's just say it if we're gonna be so we can kind of look ahead and know. That's all. I'm, I'm fine if we meet every Wednesday, but let's make it known that probably we're gonna have to do that. Cause we keep doing three weeks in a row or so and. Well, I have some real concerns about that because people have other things happening and that one thing, people have other things. Uh, going on in their lives. For another thing, and this is a big deal. Every time we have another council meeting, to get ready for the council meeting, that puts more burden on. The city manager and all the department heads. And so we have to be. Somewhat realistic, I think. Right, but we don't wanna go to midnight either, so we gotta find a balance.
It's just what I was gonna sort of eon, is finding that balance, you know what I mean? And figuring out, you know, how we can kind of meet the moment, um, and make sure that you're getting what you need. Um, so that we can keep moving forward, um, in a way that, you know, we can meet as often as you would like. But, um, I, I also would appreciate, you know, sort of a, maybe we'll hit a, hit a stride here.
I can just tell you one thing that came up for me. Um, I met today with, you know, the finance committee. It was set at that date because it was supposed to be a Wednesday, we didn't. Okay, so sometimes some of the committees are saying, well, we can meet on this Wednesday for counselors who don't wanna have to. I don't wanna have another meeting on the council. I want my full focus to be on the council night, to read all my stuff. And I had a meeting today from three to past four thirty and it was like. Uh, then I gotta shift gears and they, and Amy had it because we weren't supposed to have a council. That's the only reason why, that's another thing for those of us who sit on other things. The people need to know, don't do it on a Wednesday. I mean, I've told people, don't. Think I'm gonna be there on a Wednesday, but today I kinda had to because it was important, so that's kinda why I brought it up. Except today is a, the fourth Wednesday of the month, this is a regular Wednesday night. Or was it? Yeah. Oh. So. She put it on a regular. Oh, well, so, okay, let's keep moving.
Back to the, the chart, um, these are really good comments, um, and are really gonna help, I think, once we get sort of the, the plan in place and to sort of get the. Uh, agenda items, you know, then we can sort of evaluate, you know, bi-weekly, weekly, you know, twice a month, uh, figure it out from there. Um, so then, uh, the last one that I wanted just to note in the infrastructure is, um. The homeowner outreach education, so it's in the nine to twelve month column, the third cell down. Um, we added just the, the backflow preventers to that education piece. Um, that was kind of a big deal with the floods, um, and I think, you know, caught some folks off guard, and so we just don't wanna lose sight of that, um, going forward.
Okay, at this point, um. Anyone who was hoping, well, we'll be done by eight thirty tonight, we're not being done, getting done by eight thirty, we still have work to do. I wanna hold to my promise of always taking a break at eight thirty, so it's time for our ten-minute break. Anyone can call us back to order, keep, keep moving aheads. Good decision so far, good discussion so far. Back to you, Kelly.
Okay, great. Um, so now, um, so I covered most of the, the pieces within the infrastructure. Uh, template, uh, table, um, and so just moving on to the economic development table, um. So I'm just much like we were doing, I'm just gonna go through some of the, the comments that we had to, um, the strategies. So the first one, um, is in this sort of zero to three, um. Column, uh, and it's the very first item, so rather than renew the tax increment finance, we put in language to the side. On that, um, so it's more of a decision point than sort of a foregone conclusion. I mean, I think that that's what we're working towards. But we just wanna make sure that we're capturing what we're doing. Um, and then the other items that, uh, we uh, adjusted, there's no other changes in the zero to three column. There's no changes in the three to six month column. Um, just to remind, these are all curated from the sticky notes. If you did wanna see all the sticky notes, um, I did send you that, that version of this table. Um, but moving on, um, so column six, the first cell there, we did add an example, um, to that. And so, um, I did see that, and he's still there, Alec is on the line here. Um, and so what we wanted to do is provide an example of a specific project. So the Parks Connector Trail is something that would be sort of one of the things that we would be really looking at. Um, you know, to a- achieve sort of this strategy within this goal. Yeah.
This time, but can you? And maybe it's not the time, but like I'm wondering about, didn't we get some kind of Northern Borders Regional Commission grant around outdoor recreation? Outdoor Recreation Economy and just wondering like how that.
So we do have grant funding for, you know, some of this work and we actually a lot of grant funding, and so we can get you a breakdown on that.
Um, yeah, maybe I'll, yeah, great.
Carrie.
Uh, so I have a question about this whole, this whole thing, you see a lot of stuff about childcare on here, which I would have thought would be under. The first goal under housing, no. Nope, nope.
Where was it? Wasn't there something about in housing about?
Oh, yeah, this is an issue.
Childcare?
Um, so these are specific to the um, goals. And so there are, within the economic development pieces, there's overlap and actually within your um, draft plan. I did wanna kind of highlight that because that's a really good kind of plan, uh, point, is that like the city plan itself does kind of, you know. Have overlapping themes. And so there is for sure overlapping themes here, and so, you know, maybe you might expect to see that in another goal. But I don't, it wouldn't be, or it's not aligned with the implementation plan from the city plan in the other areas. It's, it's aligned with the economic development piece, and so housing and childcare are both in this. Um, but yeah, no, it's definitely. Depending on how you're thinking about it, um, but if you look at this first goal, you can kind of see, I think it's. In there maybe, maybe not.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it is, yep.
Okay.
So it's just sort of linking the two.
Alright.
Um, but I think that that's all, that's also why these priorities work really well together. And I don't know if this is, it was intentional or not, but when we did the survey. You did select these three items and these are the three items that were highlighted and the city plan is going together.
Okay.
Um, so it's consistent.
Yep.
Um, okay, so then moving on down the line here, um. Uh, the create uh, matching zero percent interest loan. And so we would really like to um, partner with an organization, whether that's the Resiliency Commission. Or maybe one of our, you know, larger local businesses to provide the seed funding for that. And so, um, we did name sort of the Montpelier Commission just because we, you know, we are working closely together. But, you know, we, in order to establish a loan fund like that, we would probably want to have, um, a little bit more around that.
Yeah, you know, in that one, that idea in particular, right now, I know the commission is actively, you know, one of the priorities that they have around adaptive downtown. Is to help do building condition surveys for like the hundred impacted buildings in the downtown to give like a roadmap to building improvements. So that like the next time there's a flood and somebody's like, what do I do to make this more resilient? They actually have the roadmap right there. And, and also the, that zero percent interest loan. Really, the idea behind that is that the state, we're designated downtown in Montpelier and the state has designated tax credits for building owners. Including for flood mitigation, so could pay for like fifty percent of a flood mitigation project in a privately owned business. But sometimes they don't have the other fifty percent. So if like we actually had a loan fund that could like catalyze people to, you know, they had the roadmap. And then they had access to capital to actually do it, you know, there's tools out there that we just need to, um, align and leverage them.
Yeah. Oh, for sure. I mean, we are definitely about leveraging dollars, so just trying to figure out how to structure that. And so it's another one of those like evaluation sort of situations, um, so we can reframe that, um, if needed.
I guess just the question I have then is about the, it like concern about like underwriting it or looking for money to cap it, to seed it?
It's both.
Yeah.
But especially the money.
Yeah, yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, so that, that's, that's the piece there, um. And so we would be looking for a partnership probably. Um. So then the next one that we had identified, um, so uh, in column nine to twelve. Reestablish city-run childcare programs and rebuild and expand city-run childcare programs, including after school. And so we would just want either the consideration or the evaluation thereof, um. So that we can kind of bring you a plan. Um, and then looking at the next one that we had, um. This create a new Montpelier Economic Development Revolving Loan Fund, similar sort of thing, we would wanna plan for that. Um. So we do have some language in there, um, to sort of plan and establish. So those are the comments that we had on the economic development section.
I think this is, I think economic development is very important. Um, because if you look at our downtown and we heard our businesses that they're struggling. Um, I, I, I would love for the new physician that's coming in to. Maybe one of their first tasks is take a look at this and, you know, maybe suggest some best practices. Um, that he has seen, I feel like, I feel like we're missing something. And I'm not an expert in economic development, I just feel like this could be a little bit more robust in terms of. Looking at our downtown, you know, we partner with Montpelier Life, but they're not really into economic development. We don't, there's a gap and I don't know what that gap is. Um, but I'm hoping our, the new staff person might have some good suggestions. Cause I, I just wanna see this particular strategy be a little bit more robust and aggressive. Because I feel like we're at a crossroads for our city and, um. I think there's a lot happening, but I think the, you know, the vacancies in our businesses downtown, the landlords. Um, own, there's a small number of landlords that own. A large chunk of our downtown and, you know. I, I really want to come up with strategies to fill all of our, um, businesses. And, and be very strategic about what that is, not necessarily. Um, I don't know, I don't, I don't know the words, but not necessarily, you know, touristy stores, but like. Business, like, one of the ideas I was thinking about was, um. And this is so raw, right? But like having some manufacturer businesses come into our town, have like a satellite business. And, um, you know, working with some of the Afghan women to, cause they sew, right? So having some like sustainable businesses in town that. You know, kind of drive tourists here, build the economy, like, why do people wanna come here? Maybe see darn tough socks being built in a downtown store and they can go buy socks, right? Like, I'm thinking stuff like that and I don't, that is not in our plan at all. And so I just wanna make sure we're thinking broader, bigger, more aggressive and how do we attract those businesses into our downtown? They should be here, working in our little.
So two strategies that I think they probably could dovetail that, that I think would be good. Um, and you know, I think that this kind of as we're doing this, it's really an opportunity to kind of. You know, establish sort of that baseline, but also to get those ideas sort of out on the table. And yeah, like the businesses are struggling and what are we gonna do to make sure that we continue to have the downtown that we all want, um, in use? Um. You know, and be good partners in that stewardship. But, um, the um, strategic plans of the development, develop and implement a new economic development strategic plan. So as part of the um, budget process, we're gonna have to put some money towards that probably. Um, or not, but like the, I think that's where those ideas might be developed, you know, potentially. Um, and then also this, um. Develop and employ a concierge service, offering centralized point of contact for business development, including guidance on permitting, expansion and real estate. So I could see where that new position really could be here in this item. And so like, yeah, I think that you're absolutely, you know, keying in on something that's critical to make sure that we can breathe life into the economic development. Um, priority in a way that is real and impactful. Cause otherwise it could just be, you know, that we wanna see economic development, but what are we really doing to make sure it happens?
Well, I think it's like the concierge is like reactive, I, I want like a proactive approach, right? The concierge in my mind is like, come to me and talk to me and like, I will help you walk through the process of having business here. But I feel like we're still missing like a, maybe it's in the strategic plan, economic development, but the very strong, aggressive, proactive approach to entice businesses into our town, to figure out what industry, what, you know, what niche we want to see come to our town and reach out to those businesses and say, hey, we've got a 3,000 square foot building. Let's make a deal and come to Montpelier. Like that's not happening. I don't, I don't think.
I would, you know, which is two quick things. One is the actual, the last economic development plan, I think we had talked about like light manufacturing, like what you were talking about, like that's actually in there as an opportunity for Montpelier. And then the second thing is like, I look at, uh, Bar Hill as like very aggressive, right? Like that's Caladonian spirits, right? That started in Hardwick and it's not in Hardwick anymore, right? It's here. And so to me, that was like a direct result of, you know, that kind of, so I feel like Montpelier, like we have that muscle, like we just need to use it. And then the third thing I would say is just like, you know, this is like an artificial distinction between economic development and housing. And I feel like we've had this conversation of like, who do we focus on economic development or do we focus on housing? Like housing is economic development, like housing is where jobs go to sleep. And like, um, I don't think there's any better economic engine for our downtown with the people that we're missing. I mean, we need more people. And the way to do that is to have more housing, especially in our downtown.
One thing that's worth remembering, um, is that developing the, the new infrastructure to go out to, uh, to Bar Hill, part of that was so that it would be there to build out, to develop out beyond Bar Hill. And that's the thing that we haven't, uh, haven't been able to convert into a reality yet. But that's, that's one of the places, you know, that, that whole stretch is, is primed to, uh, for development.
So maybe that should be part of our plan, right? It's like a very strategic like area. I mean, there's, I don't know what that area is. Is it like the Connor Building or is it more like the even faster? Like, what is it?
Well, yeah, it's what, what, that's what I put on one of my stickies. It was too, too, too micro detailed to be, to make it onto these charts, but it was build out beyond, uh, Bar Hill or something like that. Cause what, cause there's stuff that can go there.
Like it to see.
Yeah.
A bike path. So that's like a very, it's a ten day.
I don't.
They can have a drink. Go gamble more and spend more.
Ah, jeez.
So I mean, I, I think, you know, we, if there's something that you want to sort of add in the strategies to sort of capture that or if you want to try to capture it with them, one of the things that we've already got noted here, uh, these, we do want it to be impactful. Um, so just maybe we can think on that a little bit and think about what is in this section and then.
Well, I have an idea. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ellen.
So I would like it, um, have compensation plan, right? Evelyn, uh, presented. It would be great if the new person brings something to us like that. Then we can go back and if we need to change this one, we can change it. But I want to hear, um, his ideas first and his vision. It, it, it doesn't have to be very detailed. It's just a very brief. What he can check this, he can check our, um, city plan and come up with some ideas, uh, and a vision and present to us. Then we can go back and if you want to revise this, we can revise it.
That sounds great. And, um, just a meeting with him and I'm really excited to make an announcement, um, for our new hire. But he is really an ideas person. That's one of the things that Mike and I both kind of noticed about him. Um, and so I think that that would be a really good way to, you know, kind of get this sort of a flavor for what his skillset is and, you know, help advance this. Because this is really important. Um, so noted, um, and I like the idea of being able to amend if needed.
One of the things, what I was going to say is that, uh, if you look at, if you look at the housing grid, it has a couple of things about doing, uh, doing a building lot survey, uh, look for, uh, developer incentives and stuff, that same kind of thing can go in here under economic development. Where, what are the locations that we want to, and we can get economic development, uh, activities?
Great. So, um, I will kind of take this, uh, table and work it into the final version that I bring back to you at the next meetings. Um, and I also will, um, work on making sure that the, um, timelines are in alignment with sort of the strategies per goal. So it's a little easier to look at. Um, so thanks for bearing with me on that. Um, the other thing that I just wanted to go over, um, to make sure that you're good with, so that we'll then, you know, build this plan out the rest of the way and bring it back to you. Um, is the mission, vision and value statement that are in this plan to make sure that it's in alignment with what you would like to see. And so just taking the mission statement, um, so what we have here and we're happy to modify this in any way, but what we've got and captured based on sort of what is in the tables, um, and sort of in the plan below. But to foster a thriving, resilient, safe and sustainable community by focusing on housing, infrastructure and economic development, ensuring all residents have accessible, access to affordable housing, a high quality of life and equitable opportunities. The one piece that I will note is do we want to keep affordable in there or do we want it to just say housing? Cause we need all housing.
Have a lot of affordable, certainly lower for low income housing. We have a ton of that.
So we did scrub the rest of the plan for the affordable language, just because we kind of had that conversation today in terms of, you know, we need all housing. So do we want it just to capture affordable as like sort of something that we're calling out or just everything?
Obviously my, my personal preference is like leave it in because there's all different kinds of affordability, right? I mean, market rate housing is still affordable housing. It's, who's it affordable for?
Right. People think of the term affordable as a program that subsidizes housing. Yeah. So maybe what we should be looking at is something like all residents of all economics strata have access to housing that's within their means. Something like that.
Yeah, I can re, recast it then to. Okay. So the vision statement, um, Montpelier will get vibrant, inclusive, safe and sustainable community where diverse housing options, modern infrastructure and a strong local economy converge to create a welcoming and prosperous environment for all. Are we good?
That sounds great.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, awesome. So this was right. Exactly. Let's, let's live here.
Yeah.
Well, that was easy. Um, so the next, uh, piece is, you know, we have many values. And so, you know, I don't want to diminish the ones that are not listed here, but I also wanted to focus on the core sort of in this moment, in this time. And so, um, the first piece is the community. Um, I think it's really important that, you know, we're focused on, you know, working this plan and working it together. Um, and so I'll just do you with that value. Um, we value collaboration and connection. We recognize that the strength of our community lies in the contributions of residents, city councils, city staff committees and organizations. Any changes to that? Okay, good. Great. Um, so the next one is kind of a two for, uh, special here. Um, so.
Changes as we think more about it on our own, right?
Uh, yes.
But we're hoping to have it finalized that.
Yeah, I know that. I know that. But sometimes we do it all right and a night.
Oh, no, it's, it's a lot. So like if there was something that you really wanted to modify or you wanted to add in, um, for sure. Um, and then just if you would give me those changes, you know, by the first week of August, I can get into the packet. That would be great. Um, so the next one is transparency, transparency and accountability. We are committed to transparent, accountable and ethical governance, ensuring responsible management of resources. Uh, the next one, innovation. We encourage and celebrate creativity and innovation, continuously seeking new solutions to meet the evolving needs of our city and practices that enhance the well-being of our community and foster economic growth. Okay. And then, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. We embrace diversity and strive for inclusion, an inclusive environment, ensuring equity for all members of our, our community and organizations. Just making sure that, you know, everybody, um, has a seat at the table. Um, so if there's something that you would like noted here, please let me know. Is there, do you have an addition?
Okay, not this part, but, um, expected results.
Yes.
So the first one, uh, I think we need some kind of numbers or percentage. Again, like we can talk about it after we have the, um, economic development presentation. But like increased job creation, how much? Like 1%? Hmm. 5%? I don't know. Business expansion to businesses every year, five? You know, like, uh, supported by policy. You know, it, it could be this one, others I think, okay, to me, but the first one could be a little bit more specific.
Um, that is a really, uh, good comment. And also what is really nice is some of the things we talked about earlier today in our leadership team meeting, they keep kind of going back to that as, you, you probably noticed even in the KPIs, uh, in iteration fact, we did have some percentages for, you know, targets. Um, and so the percentages still exist, but the targeted amount is not in this version because we wanted to sort of establish a baseline. And so depending on how we want this expectation to go, you know, we could, we could certainly get really specific and granular there. Um, to sort of call it out. And, you know, even with the housing, you know, we talked a little bit about, you know, whether or not to have the, you know, 75 new homes in there or not, you know what I mean? And I think we sort of decided that we did want to have that in there because we wanted to identify what we were trying to achieve. And so I think that that's similar to what you're kind of identifying. Okay. Thank you. Sounds good. Um, so, um, if you're good with those items, then I'll keep them in the plan. I'll make a few modifications based on the conversation. And I'm happy to, you know, add other values if you'd like, but I think hopefully this sort of that captures it. I'm not going to go through the rest of this. We'll kind of retool it, um, to include the tables, um, so we can track. Um, but I do want to adjust this for the last piece here. We're in the home stretch, I hope. Um, it's just the KPIs that we have for each goal. Um, so we did spend some time as a team identifying the ones that we thought, you know, would demonstrate that we were achieving that particular goal. We could add KPIs, but we also wanted to be realistic about the, sort of the number of them um, in this sort of baseline year. So maybe what could be good, maybe a homework assignment rather than going through each of the KPIs per goal is if maybe you might take a look at this, um, plan and let me know if there's something you would like to see.
Need to just.
Yes. Yep. Or we can also spend the time and kind of going through each of them. There, there's not that many of them.
Curious like, um, sorry, just like on the, um, I mean, are you asking us to like suggest what the number of homes constructed annually should be or what the ratio for rental units to new, in new development should be? Or, you know, the total number of miles paved? Like this, I mean, it feels to me like I would actually look for recommendations from staff to be like.
Totally. Yeah. I mean, so we did, like I said, we took the targets out of this version and this iteration because, you know, we, we can identify what sort of those numbers are and we probably can tie them to best practice. And so if you would like us to come back in the next version with, you know, what the, the benchmark would be to then measure against, then I'm happy to do that. And then that could be the final version.
Yeah. I mean, I personally think that that would be like the way to go is to have the staff that are closest to these issues, like identify what they think a reasonable benchmark is. And then it's a council, we can review them and say, you know, is that aggressive enough or we want to prioritize this one or?
Yep.
You know, I don't know. Cause I think other, I just don't have the context to, you know, I don't know what a reasonable number of miles to pave is.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, I would say that is where our updates will be, right? So if we say annually, we want, I don't know, who's going to pick this ratio of rental units to ownerships and new developments? What is that number? And then whoever's responsible for that. So partly right, you're like responsible matrix. So every, I don't know what the magic number is, like every, you know, third or fourth meeting, whatever that time, the cadence is, we can measure against what our goal is and they can come say, oh, we have five, but our goal was 30, so we're probably not going to make it. And so that helps with transparency. It helps with monitoring and measuring and, and then we can find out, well, why? Like, are there barriers? Like it'd be nice to have that cadence frequently. So when we can decide, like if there's a barrier, what is that barrier can we overcome it? Um, but not like, not, I think it's, it's hard to have updates every year because you're like, well, where, where were we starting? Like where were we along the way and how did we get there? And so when you have these measurable goals and you have very frequent updates, you know, we can, it's just more transparent. It's easier to plan. It's easier to prevent, you know, us not meeting that goal to have those conversations along the way. So I would love to see numbers associated here, but then in addition to that, having that regular cadence updates against those numbers, like where are we?
So, um, yeah, we can totally do that. And I think actually that's a, a point of clarity that I wanted to kind of talk about in terms of like, once we do stuff, we'll switch it to plan in motion. What would be sort of the cadence of report out? And I think probably I would, like the, the most frequent that I think we probably could manage is quarterly. Um, and so if that's good, then that's what we'll aim to do. Um, the other thing that I will also note is that, you know, um, we need to develop the reporting structure for this plan because we no longer have the software to do that. So it's just trying to figure out like what that will look like and how it will come back to you. And how staff will do that. Um, so we just get it sort of format the reporting too. Um, so it's just one, I would just want to be realistic about it. And maybe it's, it can be pretty simple. And maybe it's, you know, a solution that we might be able to, you know, work through with, you know, Alex or, you know, like, I think that there's a way we can do it. I'm just sort of noting that it will look a little different, you know, um, and we're, we're up for it, but we just want to. So if you're up for quarterly, and I think, um, so we can definitely bring back, you know, benchmark numbers based on what we think is achievable and based on industry standards. Um, and then the only other clarifier that I would ask for are associated with the KPIs is, so as it stands right now, we have KPIs that are really associated at the goal level. They're not at the strategy level per se. And, you know, um, if we can keep them at the goal level for this plan year, that would be good. Um, but if you would like us to try to drill down a little bit further, we'll do that. So the goal it is, thank you. That just, that just really does help us if you say, um, we are committed to applying the measures, but we want to make sure that we can also handle it.
Yeah, I, I think keeping it at the goal level is a good idea in part because we don't want to spend all of our time devising the management system, the measurement system.
Absolutely. Yeah. Okay. So I, I think I have what I need from you then to bring back a plan that is in more final form.
We could.
Um, and it will smooth out kind of the tracking pieces. So it's a little bit easier to look at. Um, is there anything else you would like to see me bring back to you for the final iteration? Oh, yes. That table will be really helpful. Um, so I mean, one of the things that from the, the beginning that we had heard were that we wanted to sort of roles responsibility, who's responsible, you know, uh, we wanted to make sure that we could track the progress. And we also wanted to make sure that we knew what the dollars were associated. And so in some instances, we may not know that yet because we haven't provided, we can, some instances we do. But in some instances, it will be sort of predicated on the investments within the budget. But if you're setting these priorities, then that's the first step.
Great work, Kelly. This is, this has been a lot and it's, it's really, I think it's going to be helpful for council and for all the departments going forward.
Yeah. Very helpful. Thank you for everyone for hanging in there with us on us and, um,
Great work, Kelly. Thank you.
Okay. Other business?
So I do have one item, um, that I wanted to kind of talk through. Um, so and then I'm going to lean on the folks that brought this forward, um, so that the whole. so and then I'm gonna lean on the folks that brought this forward, um so that the homelessness regional meeting. Um so um Elin, Ben and Adrian um proposed a a meeting.
Jim.
There you go. I got you. There you go. Um so what I wanted to just kind of talk through that a little bit um in terms of the the process. Um so um just really noting the moment that we're in um around um sort of the unhoused and, you know, how we can um move forward, you know. We will be bringing this to council um next meeting. You know, sort of as an overview of what we're currently doing internally at the staff level. That being said, there's also a need for, you know, a more regional conversation. And so I really appreciate the leadership on that because um you know, we as staff are doing the best that we can, but you know, it's it's a really complex issue. Um and, you know, we do need those supports. And so um just working through kind of what the the request was, um we did reach out to the Regional Planning Commission and they agreed to help us host an event. Um and um I just wanted to note that, but then also just to kind of get your feedback and take on um sort of the idea that um so Adrian has offered to help facilitate that event. And so I just want to make sure that everybody's sort of on that same page and it's good with that. And Adrian, I don't know if you wanted to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but just kind of share some of those details.
Yeah, I can give you just a little bit of background. I mean, I think you know, looking, uh we know we're in a moment, right? So we're in a moment, it's not gonna get any better in terms of the unhoused and, you know, I travel all the time and it's not just Montpelier, like this is a national issue and you know, we've talked about it, we've heard from the public and I I feel like we have to be aggressive and take some action. And so and Montpelier is not going to solve this on our own. Our police department are overwhelmed. Every time I go to Shaw, there's I mean, I think we were arresting someone today. I mean, it is just, it's it's, we need to do something. And so um I pulled on my strengths. So my background is public health, that's just where I feel comfortable in. And so I reached out to my network um of folks that work in public health. So the blueprint um for health is funded through UVM, it's it's through the Department of Public Health and looking at a really the population health service organization and through um there's an organization that's working together in Washington County called Thrive. So thinking about accountable care organizations, how do we look at this as a systems approach? It is a very, very complex puzzle that has many, many, many pieces. And so I reached out to those folks to try to figure out, you know, what are they doing from a public health perspective? Like, what are, what is their take on this and and so I learned a little bit more about just kind of what's happening in Washington County. So there's so many players, like we, we know there's a lot of people focused on this from the housing, so there's the Washington County Housing Coalition. Um Tess Taylor was hired in Berry City, so she's doing a huge amount of work as a full-time employee working with Berry Up. I I don't know where she's funded through, but um she's you know, implemented a bunch of initiatives in Berry City to help focus specifically on the unhoused. And so, you know, working with all these different organizations and I'm a systems person, it's just how my brain works. And so I was like, it would be so great if everyone came to the same table and talked about what are all these pieces doing? Because everyone's working, you know, in their world, which is just a very common way of of working. But when we think about population health, accountable care organizations, it's about bringing everyone to the table to say, what are you doing? What is working really well? What have you tried that maybe hasn't worked? And then taking that information and bringing it out to us here at the council to say, let's make some data-driven decisions. Let's look at some like policies that we could implement immediately to support the unhoused, to look at our community and and see what's working in our community really, really well. So let's focus on our assets and our strengths. But then also look at some opportunities and gaps of what what we can do immediately, knowing that we don't have resources, we don't have a huge amount of funding. But let's learn from the experts in this field and all these different, you know, avenues from, you know, public health, police. We have um, you know, the providers, we have um, you know, the Central Memorial Medical Center. We have the People's um group in Berry, People's Health and Wellness. We have the state, we have all these coalitions. We have the faith-based um, you know, representatives. So it's very spread out. But everyone has the piece of the puzzle and I would love to have this regional conversation where I'm more than happy to facilitate it, but I don't want to step on people's toes either. So it's a very delicate balance of everyone's doing a huge amount of work. And I'm just looking at it from like, what is everyone doing? What's going really, really, really well? Let's celebrate our successes. Let's focus on those opportunities and and gaps and make some very actionable items for us in Montpelier. But, you know, that was kind of where I was thinking and, you know, talking to Kelly, she's like that, you know, the the Regional Planning Commission, that's that's what they do. They bring people regionally together to have these conversations and everyone I've talked to said, yeah, this is just not, we haven't had this type of structure. So let's it's scary. I'm not gonna lie, it's a little scary and intimidating, but I think we've got to rip the band-aid off and just do it. It might not be perfect, but I think let's try it and let's see what works, what doesn't work. And in the vein of continuous improvement, let's just continue to figure it out and work through some of these pain points. But I think by just not having the structure and not moving to the next level, I I think it's just irresponsible and it's scary because, you know, I don't think we have the answers, right? We've been indecisive of like what to do with, you know, toilets and showers. And I think our community is just in crisis. And so I think it is our job as leaders to 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 listen, to collect the data, to hear what's working and then make some decisions. You know, they may work, they may not work, but I think we've got to keep the door open to to continue to figure it out. So that is what I was proposing, a very long background.
The three of us got together really to to, we sat down and we said, we haven't really done anything. And, you know, you know, Steve has been on us about that and we talked about, we haven't done anything and we really haven't. We we saw, I mean, I sit on that economic group. And, you know, it's getting more of a crisis for them all the time. And I said, we need to sit down and talk about, how can we do something? I'm hearing there are pots of money that can be leveraged, because we don't have it. So we gotta get some of these pots of money and then decide how we want. These people are gonna help us decide how to do this. But the three of us said, we need to do something and we don't, we can't really wait because we're coming upon winter. And it, and we all know the summer just flies by. So we just sat down and said, let's push to do something. Whatever it is, we haven't done anything, we're gonna start hearing it from people. We may hear it from people that they don't like what we're doing, but you know, we got, we're leaders, we gotta do something. So Adrian was basically the one that says, this is my strength. And we just said, go with it, girl. I mean, and she did, as you can see. And we just wanted to follow her and help her, Haylen and I, and just get something going. I mean, and the sooner the better because time's going by. So that's, that's what pushed us. You know, and so we thought we need to push the rest of the council and let's get going on this. We're, we're the leaders of this city. We need to act, act like leaders. So and I really want to thank you for all you've done. You have really spearheaded this. And I'm really appreciative and I'm sure Haylen is too. So you know, that's why, that's what this came out. We just were three people that thought something needs to be done. And how can we do it? Grab the bow by the horns and we rode.
Okay, I think we need to uh mention uh Richard Shear because he was emailing all of us. To see some kind of change. So I think he also kind of um pushed us to think out of the box. So I just want to mention his name too.
Can I ask, are you thinking of a regional convening of like community members? Are you thinking about like people that are in this space and getting them around the table or like collected in that kind of?
Yeah, so I created a list based on what I think, right? I'm novice, right? So I'm reaching out to the folks at the Blueprint, the Thrive Organization. Once again, I'm coming at this from where my strengths are. And I know that I have blinders because my expertise is public health. So I'm thinking of it from um you know, I have the department, uh the Police Department, Public Works. I was thinking about Berry, right? So Kelly's colleague, like the city manager, um the the mayor, um the police, so regional, right? So kind of mirroring our structure with Berry. And we can invite other folks too, I just didn't want to make it to be a hundred people. Um the, you know, Tess Taylor, who she is the Berry homelessness and housing liaison and and Berry, the Good Samaritan, another way, just basics. Faith-based representatives, local business. I have two contacts at CBMC that attended our meeting last year that are on the front lines at the medical center. Um the Washington Housing Coalition, Washington County Mental Health Services, the Agency of Human Services, Director of Housing, Policy and Planning, People's Health and Wellness, the Montpelier Housing Task Force and um, you know, it was really like an organizational discussion with providers.
Not really community members.
Like I'm thinking of like data, like
Looking at experts, kind of, so to speak.
So Kelly, you're gonna be working with someone at the CVRPC?
Yeah, so we uh have it support, just to make sure that, you know, that our group has what they need to get this going. And so rather than it being a a special city council meeting, it would be more of a, you know, event, a a community event that would be more regional in nature. And I'm I'm happy to help facilitate that. And then also, you know, read the list, make sure we get, you know, the extra folks on there um and then, you know, get it going. Um but I think we the timing is one of the things that is a little like, it's great that we can get the regional uh stage and also help, but then it's also, it might not be August twentieth, that might be, you know, a little bit later than that. But I also think that it's important to make sure that we get the stage set right um to have the conversation. Um so I think we're, you know, primed to really kind of do this, I think, at a regional level, but then also sort of prep you from like a local level at the next meeting too. So to me, when Adrian and I were talking about this, it was, we need to do all the things. It's not just like one approach. And I think also just sort of noting where we were last September and sort of the outcomes from that meeting and you know, well, you know, it was good to kind of get things on the table. We didn't have the outcomes you know, that we might have from a facilitated event. And so I think, you know, taking that approach really will be helpful. And so I'm happy to be part of it, happy to, you know, help and um be there. Um but in, I just wanted to you know, take the opportunity to sort of put it out there for folks and make sure that this sounds like a good way to go and also be able to approach it differently.
Yeah. Steve.
I'll be brief. Uh I just want to caution that you you might want to set your expectations that this big group of the people that have been tolerating the status quo uh is not really where creative new action is gonna come from. I would invite these po- people in to spill their data and their ideas, but then have a a uh tiger team in Montpelier and a tiger team in Berry that's actually charged with implementing something. Because if you leave it to that huge group of status quo people, you will see the status quo continue. And I cautioned this when you created the homelessness task force. I said, keep the providers off of it. Invite them in for testimony and instead you packed it with providers and see what we got.
So we're talking about an event, but I'm I'm hoping we're also talking about an ongoing effort, right? Because we're not gonna, if we could sit down for an hour and a half with a big group of people and solve the problems, we would have done that a long time ago, right? So what we can do is start to build relationships, start to build that communication, um have a sense of kind of who all the players are so that when and I don't know what the plan would be, there's a lot of different ways we could go with it, but that 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 ongoing piece has got to be what's important. And so when school starts again and we see kids who are unhoused showing up in our schools, I think the schools need to be part of this conversation. So what is that gonna mean? How's, how are we gonna respond? What needs are gonna come up that we don't know yet? But if we have this, some sort of structure, some sort of means by which to have a coordinated effort and talk to each other, then I think we'll be able to respond better. That's just one example.
All right. Let's go. Thanks for getting getting this started. We're still getting out early. Council reports, starting with you, Kelly.
I'm the President, uh Public Arts Commission, um President Chair, or I don't know how they call it, Ward Joyce. So we had a very nice conversation. And uh he mentioned what they are doing uh with Montpelier Alive, how they um collaborate with them. And also we talked about uh all the art pieces they contributed to our uh community. And we come up with this idea, uh we will work together. We are planning uh to have a thirty-minute art uh walk for the city council. So Ward will come with us and then he will just like uh show us different art uh pieces they um uh created for Montpelier and then uh talk about the background story. So because as a resident, when he was showing all these pictures, I said, oh, I don't know this one, I don't know this one. So I uh we thought it would be nice, like very short art tour or art book for the city council. Make um more uh make us to uh uh create like informed decision in the future about Public Art Commission and also um art-related initiatives. And also we talk about uh how art can contribute to economic development and growth. So how we can integrate it uh with um economic development. And also he mentioned um one of their commission members created art map on Montpelier. So it is like a digital uh tool, you just click and it shows the art where the artist and talks about the story of it. And then you can just uh take a tour like digitally all over the Montpelier. So and um he also said that he wants to uh come to a city council meeting. He did before, just give a presentation. So I think it was very effective meeting. And I told him, we haven't decided uh anything about the future of the public art uh committee, but they are still as a, on our list as an active commission. So they will continue their work and we will see what will happen. But I really want to see them um working um with Montpelier Alive and our community members. And it will be very great to have them um on our committee uh list. Thanks.
Great.
Good. Um I just want to give an update on the Housing Committee. Carrie and I are on the Housing Committee and we've reached out to the remaining um committee members and try to kind of restart and, you know, uh we've got a date planned for, it's actually the regularly scheduled meeting, which would be the first Tuesday of August, August fifth, six thirty, city council chambers. I'm hoping that location is okay. If it's not, we can figure it out. Um but yeah, we're just gonna get started, meet with the people who are still on the committee, review the charge and try and find a path forward. Um but we're excited to to do that. And then I just want to, I know we already talked about it, but I just want to say congratulations again to the Planning Department and to all the different people that contributed to that city plan. You know, New Hampshire's a tough crowd. And so, you know, the fact that they awarded this really says something. And so I just really appreciate the work that went into that and just want to acknowledge it again. So thanks, that's thanks.
Jim?
Um I went to the um regional speaking of regional meetings, I went to the one that the Central Mount Piling Commission put together and um where I did learn and um Sarah kind of knew a little bit about it, where we were bleeding in the Middlesex and um Berlin with our one percent. Sarah kind of knew a little bit about it, where we were bleeding in the Middlesex and, um, Berlin with our one percent sales tax. And I sat next to a. Select Board member from. From a Middlesex who saw my tag and said, oh, I'm glad I'm sitting next to you, you're causing us a problem. We got residents that are ordering online and they're getting charged the one percent and. Netflix services and stuff like that, and I thought, I bet this is happening in Berlin, and Sarah confirmed that, yeah, she's gotten some. Complaints, so we, you know, it's all because of the zip code, they're the same zip code as, but I think it's a state thing to figure out. But, um. I was glad I went because, you know, this was in our hometown. If I didn't go, there would have been no Montpelier representative there. And it might have been a little bit embarrassing, I think, because, you know, it was held right here. So I'm glad I showed up, uh, but nobody from Barry showed up, nobody from Barry Town showed up, nobody from Waterbury. One person from Northfield, it was mostly a bunch of, um, the smaller towns. Who. I found out I was back doing that in the eighties as a selectman, it's still the same two subjects, roads and dogs. I thought, boy, it'd be so simple if that was all we had to deal with. But anyway, um, the other thing is I went to a meeting. This afternoon. And, um, the feast thing is still an issue. No question about it, um. It was. Contentious and heated. On both sides. And I tried to be a little bit of a excellent peacekeeper, peacekeeper for me. Cause I'm usually sometimes on the contentious side or something, but. It's definitely still an issue, um. There's different ideas of how to work on it, but. I think towards the end it got kind of calmed down and we're gonna try going forward, but. You, you know, there's, there's some concern about the cost of it, so. So.
Thanks. So.
I don't know.
Carrie.
No.
Adrian.
Um, I don't have a report, but I just have a question for guidance, though we received, um. Notes from our consultant from the. For the city hiring manager and, um. I don't know how we're providing feedback, I'm confused, so I, I don't want to, I want this timeline to continue. So he asked us for very specific feedback. And he wants it timely and so that he can do his job. And so I feel like I'm hanging out there in this world of not knowing how to provide feedback and. How that's gonna be collected and so that he can go and do his job and we can hire a city manager, so. What is that? Look, what is the process? What are we supposed to be doing? Does anyone know?
Yeah, for a suggestion.
Yes, you can.
Um, just to offer a suggestion, um, so. I think, um, the last, the last meeting we did talk about this topic, you know, Jeff was gonna be sort of sitting as the, you know, point of contact. But maybe perhaps if he had a question about the assessment, we could take some time for him to talk with him.
Well, he had very specific questions on the public involvement. Before or after, like he, and so I just, I think we need a structure.
So we did actually, and to that point, I am trying my best to stay out of this.
I know.
Um, but I also wanna make sure that you do get what you need, um, and so actually, this was one of the questions that he. This, I know was percolating today in terms of, you know, the public, you know, input, and so. What I had suggested is maybe perhaps, um, he could provide his recommended. Option, I understand that he offered three options, I have not seen them, I don't know what they are. But, you know, maybe that might be helpful to you in sort of how to respond to that assessment, if that would make sense, you know, because he does have the experience with. These searches and a community of our size, like what option might be, or I'm happy to also just stay out of it and, um. You know, make sure you get sort of keyed up with somebody else.
Ian mentioned, he mentioned that he will send us weekly updates. So maybe, uh, he can use, uh, uh, our consulting, like. Uh, so. We can receive his weekly updates, uh, directly. And also we can have like a set time or every Friday or every Monday, like, um. Because it has been a week, right? Then we receive that notes. But we haven't received any weekly updates, so I don't know what's happening. And lots of people are asking to me, so I wanna give some information. And it will be great if we can see. Some, um, updates on, uh, city website. And also even like a press release, what are we doing? Because most of the people don't know. And it is an important, um. Topic for our community.
I'm, I'm gonna suggest that we not have, not ask them to use the. L council, L email group, that gets. Goes to more people than.
Oh.
Have, have a function to be in this, including in fact.
I am on that group to monitor that, and I, I do not wanna, I, I, I don't wanna know, uh, for right now.
That, we, that is a group.
And we, we, we could, we could create, uh, another list or.
So.
It was just, so actually, um, Evelyn might actually be probably a good point of contact because she, you know, was not on the search, she is in contact with Ian, and so she might be able to take some of your questions back to him and help facilitate the answers for you.
I think that's a great plan going forward, um, Evelyn Prim, Communications Coordinator. Um, Tanya and I have been working really closely with him, um, he actually, he's in Italy right now, um, so he, that's. Why he's been, um, a little bit less responsive this week, um, but we have been in touch about, um, kicking off the, um. Communication. Process, basically, and just make sure that we're outlining it, so if things are happening, it's just, there's just a little bit of a, a lag time right now. Um, but yeah, I can definitely serve as that point of contact, like I said, it's kind of between, um, the mayor and Tanya and myself, um, happy to, happy to. To relay.
Well, to, to that point, like, you know, even just thinking about the, um, structure of the Advisory Committee, right? If, if we're even gonna have an advisory. Right? Like, he was gonna come back to us with a recommendation, um, you know, but like. I think prob, I know many of us have been thinking about, what, what, what could that look like, right? And so. Do we just write that up and send it to Ian? Cause we can't send an email to ourselves because that's a discussion, right? So.
I think people should feel free to send that kind of thing to Ian directly. Because that way, he's getting. The direct communication from all the members, it's not a meeting because we're not, uh, communicating to each other, but. And I think it's quite likely that. People may have different visions of what this community advisor. Advisory group is gonna look like, and so. He's gonna come to, take all that and come back to us, Helen.
So what, you have side work, what you wanna have? Like.
We, we haven't decided. Yet, that yet, and if you send, like, I sent my idea to all of you, right? And we didn't discuss it via email. But. That, that's just an idea, it's not a, it didn't get approval from city council.
I, I think what could happen is that we could all send her. To Ian, he could synthesize them, weigh them, use his own expertise. And say, given what I'm hearing from the various voices and what I know from my experience. These are a couple of recommendations that I would make, so that he might take your idea and think like, that's a fantastic idea, and then like recommend it to us. Or he might take little pieces from other people's ideas and just kind of give us options. So that like we can respond to what he suggests to us, right? Like you're saying, we haven't decided yet. I think we have to allow him to give us the decision points to make with our. You know, we give him the input, he gives us the options, and then we decide.
And that was explicitly.
Another decision, like, are we wanna take that path? So do you want him? Like, suggest things to us, then we vote, or vice versa?
No, I think that's what he, that's what he agreed to do, that part of the, of his job is. He takes this input, and then he combines it with what he already knows and his prior experience, and he makes recommendations, and then we say. Yeah, that's a good way to proceed, or not a good way to proceed, so that we have the final decision of, of our health and skill. But we don't have to force out all details of how it might be.
But until this moment, we haven't figured out how we're giving him our ideas, but now we have that, we're gonna email him directly, our ideas.
And so the next step, thank you for that, cause I didn't wanna, I didn't know what to do, and so I didn't wanna make, mess anything up, so we'll send Ian our suggestions, he'll synthesize. And I think the next step will be, when is he gonna come back to present to us as council? So would that be August thirteenth? That's already, like, he just blew up his whole timeline.
He's not, we are, he's not currently on, on schedule, I mean, it. So we, we can certainly.
It could be, like, we could, yeah, he, he's, he's, he's off till, he's in Italy till the twenty ninth, so we're not gonna hear a lot from him between. Now and then, but, uh. But that gives him two weeks after he gets back, so we can. Shoot for that and. Maybe Evelyn, you and Tanya and I should talk about getting with Ian about that, so you don't have to follow up on that.
Perfect. Totally.
Don't, don't even write that down, as you're starting.
The, you know, I'll make sure, we'll make sure it gets warm, but Evelyn is sort of in the room during these conversations, so she'll be kind of, just take it from here. Okay.
That's three question. Who else is on the L council?
I mean, get that changed, Jim.
You can, you can.
Easily to figure out. It is. Um. It's not a lot, Odom, Murphy. Fraser, actually, Fraser.
His email is actually shut off, it comes to me now.
Is, uh.
Our awareness. But we should.
He's not, it's, it's been dropped.
Yeah.
Or goes to kill.
Cause, cause so that, that hasn't been, that list hasn't been updated yet, but.
They're not.
But we can do that, yeah. Alright, and is that what, all you had, Adrian? Okay, thanks, um. Mayor's report, I don't have a whole lot, um. It's just that, uh. I was, I've been thinking about a couple of things, uh. Lately. In terms of. The capacity of city government, what city government has to do and the capacity. That we have to do it. And the kind of big questions, but we, I've. Noticed a couple of things with, with the pool this week, we had the, uh. The, the filter issue that caused the pool to be closed for, uh, for a couple of days, fortunately, there were cold days, um. We had, uh, I've. Been to the pool with the granddaughters and just walking along in the pool, I've noticed, you know, this. The bottom of the pool really needs to be painted and, uh. It's an example of. Capital needs that we have, needs that the cities have that we have. Put off because of, uh. Because of money. And. We're, we're confronted with the same thing. With the, uh. Financial. Issues that we've had and the, and the staffing cuts, and we're gonna. Notice. You know, we're. We're three weeks into the fiscal year. We're, we're gonna notice. That, that we're bumping into, um. Limitations on the capacity of our, uh. Of all of our systems to, to meet the needs of, uh. Of the city, and people just need to be aware of that because. This is not a short-term thing, and so. As we think about, what are we gonna? Ask our city staff to do? It's worth keeping in mind, we're already asking our city staff to do more than, uh. We've asked them to do in, in previous years, and so. Every, everything we do is gonna be harder than it has been in previous years. I'm actually, you know. I'll, I'll pass it to the city clerk.
Make myself appear then. Um, unfortunately, it's not short, folks, I have a bunch of things to. To, I want to let you all know. Uh. What we're doing, and it's, uh, there's some bragging involved, so. Feel free to roll your eyes, um. Uh, my office has joined up with the US Alliance for Election Excellence. As part of their Pathfinder program, it's about seventy election jurisdictions that are working on developing standards for a national certification for election administrators. And for election offices, I'm in the Community Relations Cohort. Uh, which I'm hoping to learn a lot from, and, um, I'm being, as I always do, evangelizing small jurisdictions because they never take small jurisdictions into account. Anybody nationally comes up with elections, anything, so. Um. I'm also about to be going to the Voting Village at DEFCON. Again, uh, DEFCON is the largest international hacker conference. Um, and. You all probably know I'm a certified ethical hacker, and I'm presenting on internet voting cybersecurity, which is an issue that's just come up in Vermont, and I have actually heard. From folks in town who have concerns about it, um. Over the years, it's been something I've, uh, been involved with pretty heavily. Uh, also wanna mention that I've been nominated by a guy named Josh Benello, who is really the biggest name in election cryptography. Worldwide to join the Election Verification Network. Which is an invite-only group of about two hundred. Attorneys, political scientists, cybersecurity, election administrator folks who work. On developing the integrity and trustworthiness of US elections, I'm super proud of that. Uh, we've also got this new system on the website called Property Check. Which is, uh, a system that's. Totally free for folks, they can go online, they can sign up, and they can be notified, uh, whenever any kind of land record has been applied to their. Their property that they own, and that's for the purpose of, uh, trying to fight against fraud. Where folks will come in and put down a fake deed on somebody's property so they can, you know, uh. Go after that equity, maybe get a mortgage, it's happening more and more, and, uh, so this is a way to at least get people ahead of the game, cause I can't turn down any recording legally. Um, and the sooner one would know something about that. Uh, the better, the quicker they can act on it, um.
So John, is that partly, uh. Is the impetus partly, that partly from the, uh. Places out west where the Aryans and the neo-Nazi types are, are doing fraudulent memes against government officials, uh.
Oh, I actually didn't even know about that, um, so I'm gonna look into that now, but. No, there's just, generally, it's just people trying to make money, um, and there's been several, several. It's a cool thing, it's totally free, it's costing the city less than my new office chair did.
I think that was great, Todd, I signed up right away.
So sorry for interrupting, you know, you still have more.
Oh, just, uh, I wanna mention that there's Board of Abatement meeting coming up on the twenty ninth, and then a. Board of Civil Authority meeting coming up on the fifth, both here, uh, both six thirty. Uh, it is important that as many folks and many of you all can be there as possible. Uh, I will, we will be getting out notices about the BCA one, I know the Board of Abatement is already out there, I don't think. Either of them should go too long this time, I don't think they're gonna be like our old ones, but, um. But yeah, just put them on your calendars, cause we need that quorum. And that's all I got.
Great, Eddie, it's. A great credit to the city and to you that you're, uh, getting recognized for all this, uh. Through your expertise and all the great work you've done in this, in the areas. City manager's report?
Only one item, and it's just repeating what others have already said, but, um, it is really great that we did get the award, city plan, um, and it is. Just really good news, and so maybe we can keep getting good views. So, thanks.
It goes on, it's going on the list.
Right.
Alright. Thanks, everybody. We will be adjourned at nine forty-eight PM.